Councilor Cross is excused this evening. Thank you very much. If you are able, I invite you to rise and all join us with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much, and we are really excited to have everybody here with us this evening for a number of community recognitions. And we're going to start off with the recognition for the finalists and the winner for the If I Were Mayor contest. This is put on by the Oregon Mayors Association every year. And for the high schoolers, it is a video. For middle school, it is an essay. And for elementary, it is a poster. So Ms. Bisson, if you would go ahead and queue up the winning video from Mrs. Reed's honors, I think it's honors or AP English class, and we will play that one. And this is by Catherine Klein. And while that's coming up, the finalists with Catherine were Anastasia Lim, Taya Lewis, Carson Brown, and Samuel Solis. So I want to appreciate all of the winners for putting their videos in. Get the video going. Do you want me to do the essay first while that gets queued up? Okay. We're going to switch to the essay. The winning essay this year was submitted by Colin Vosler. Colin, are you here? Hi, Colin. Would you like to come up to the microphone? Mr. Wood, would you show him how to have that microphone on? He was one of four students who submitted an essay this year for If I Were Mayor, and I've asked him to read that essay for us. It will be advanced to the finals with the Oregon Mayors Association. The other finalists are Michelle Ashon Imora, David Ashon Imora, and Nina Bastida. Welcome, Colin. Would you please read your essay for us today?
Yeah, so my name is Colin Vosler, and this is my speech. I love Kaiser with its beautiful rivers, parks, and citizens. How could I make it even better? Well, the mayor guides this fine city. They are the leaders we look up to. Luckily for me, there are many things that I can do to encourage people and make living in Kaiser, Oregon more rewarding. Improved safety, environment, and community engagement will entice outsiders to move in and satisfy those currently residing here. When I am mayor, I will make a difference. As mayor of Kaiser, Oregon, I will help the environment. I know you're thinking that Kaiser is small, and there's not much to save, but there are still trees here, and that is still something. Every small step counts. First, we will plant trees and recycle to make this place cleaner and healthier. Then we can say we helped. In Oregon, there is only a 55% recycling rate. That's barely over half. To do our part in Kaiser, there will be more signs and recycling bins. This will be available to make recycling easier. I will also create small groups to help plant trees and pick up litter to save our ecosystem. Encouraging people to recycle and instructing young children on the importance of reducing, reusing, and recycling will be major facets of my environmental focus. I will also create a new type of bin for recycling batteries. When people recycle their non-rechargeable batteries, they will be recharged by company. This way, we can reuse our batteries that were previously toxic garbage. The reason I'm doing this is because, one, batteries contain material that can contaminate water. Two, they contain lead, mercury, cadmium, cadmium, and lithium, which are extremely bad for humans. And three, they could start potential fires or explosions. Solar panels will also be prioritized to reduce the usage of hydropower and nuclear power. They could also be used to recharge the batteries. If we work together, we will create a kinder and closer society at a park, school, or even a US market. One thing I would like to do is set up charity, and one reason is to help the vulnerable, but also because giving makes most people happy and makes most of them feel good. I'll also set up community events to bring the community together and promote friendships and relationships. I'll set up community gardens, food drives, festivals, and why not a community field day? For the others who might not want to do that stuff, we will also have trivia nights and open mic nights. This can not only promote relationships, but also make more people want to come to Kaiser and make our community grow. Safety is also a very important thing to have in a city. I will improve the safety of Kaiser by asking for feedback. What better way to make the community happier and more secure? I want to improve our bike lanes by making them bigger because we don't have very good ones, especially on busy streets like River Road that don't have many. No bike lanes can make it unsafe for the people on the sidewalks because the bikers are going fast and could knock them in the busy street or accidents, or create accidents on the sidewalk. With bike lanes, we wouldn't have to worry about that. This way, more people ride bikes, which is a lot better because that means less air pollution from cars. We should also have more CCTV. The crime rate isn't too high in Kaiser, but people are still getting hurt. So imagine if the crime rate was lower. Studies show that places with CCTV have 13% less crime than places without CCTV. And that means that I will ensure cameras get put up. We will also install more lighting. Studies have shown that places that have lighting have reduced 14% to 16% in nighttime crime, and New York City's public housing developments had a 35% decrease in nighttime crime. Kaiser citizens will feel a difference. My goal is to make others feel welcome and make people feel safer in this beautiful land. I will lead through a cleaner environment, better safety, and improved community engagement. Kaiser will continue to thrive.
I would like to invite up Michelle, David, and Nina. You are here also to receive your certificates. Colin, congratulations. Well done. Very well done. Let's get a picture. And Colin, let's wait right here. Let's get the other finals with you. Michelle?
How about just Colin?
David?
Colin, you're a winner.
Congratulations. Well done. And Nina? Is it Nina or not? Nina. We could have won it for pictures.
Sure so.
Okay, everybody ready? Why are you here? You say happy? I'm happy. Come on, I hear you.
Do you want me to do the certificates and then we'll show the video? Are we good to go? What's that?
I think it might be queued up, so.
I can't hear.
I think it may be queued up.
Queued up? All right.
Give it a shot with the projector.
And it will be posted to the city website as well. How about I call it the students will present certificates, and we'll have one more shot at it. And if we aren't able to get it to work tonight, it will be posted to the city website, and I know the Kaiser time and I know the Kaiser Times is going to link it as well. I want to thank Mrs. Reed, who is here tonight, former city counselor, who had this as an assignment for her class. And I'd like to call up to receive certificates. Our winner, Catherine Klein. Our finalists, Taya Lewis, Samuel Solis, Carson Brown, and Anastasia Lim. Come on up.
There you are. All right, congratulations. And gift card, and this one, her video will be advancing to the finals with the state. Taya? Congratulations. Samuel? Come here.
Don't run off yet.
I got a picture. Carson? And Anastasia? You're right here. All right. Congratulations. Thank you so much. Come on in. Let's get a picture. Well done, all of you. I really enjoy watching this.
All right. Scoot over here just a little bit. All right, sorry. Okay, everybody ready? Say happy.
Happy.
Kaiser rules.
Ooh, yeah.
There are rocks, and what are else?
All right, thank you so much, and thank you for doing the video.
Hi, everyone. My name is Katie Klein. I live in Kaiser, Oregon, and if I were mayor, I'd make our town Kaiser a better place for everybody. My plan has three big ideas: taking care of our environment, helping people grow together, and making sure kids and teens have great opportunities to learn and grow. First, let's talk about the environment. If I were mayor, I'd make it easier for people to recycle and compost. I'd also make our town greener by planting more trees and flowers in parks and neighborhoods. Imagine walking outside and seeing clean streets, fresh air, and nature everywhere. I'd also like to help families and businesses use clean energy like solar panels by giving them rewards for making the switch. I'd also make sure buses and cars are as eco-friendly as possible. This would help us fight climate change and keep our town beautiful for years to come. My second idea is about bringing people together. It's important that everyone has a chance to share their ideas and feel like they belong. As mayor, I'd advertise town hall meetings where people can talk about their concerns and suggestions. I'd also advertise community events like farmers' markets, block parties, and art shows, where neighbors can get to know each other. For teens and kids, I'd make sure there are plenty of club sports and safe places where they can hang out and have fun. Everyone should feel like they're a part of something special. Finally, I focus on education. Schools are where kids and teens prepare for the future, so we need to give them all the tools they need to succeed. If I were mayor, I'd help fund after-school programs where kids can learn new skills like art, sports, or coding. I'd also start a mentorship program where adults in the community could help students with their career goals. For high schoolers, I'd create workshops to help them prepare for jobs or college. Education isn't just about tests. It's about helping people grow and chase their dreams. If I were mayor, I'd work hard to make our town cleaner, stronger, and more connected. I believe that when we work together, we can make our community a better place for everyone. Thank you for listening to my ideas. Together, we can make this vision a reality.
Thank you so much. And all of you, teachers, parents, and significant adults in these students' lives, thank you for encouraging them in their work to be the future leaders of Kaiser. Very proud of these students. I'd like to go to our next order of business, which is the Proclamation for Child Abuse Prevention Month. It's my pleasure to welcome Adrienne Thomas from Liberty House to come on up and to talk to us about the importance of this recognition and the work being done here in Marion County to care for our kids, and...
I'd love to bring Peter Correlio over.
Please do.
So sorry. Great. Is this on already? How's that sound? Great. Yes, thank you. We are honored once again to be here in front of Kaiser City Council and proclaim April Child Abuse Prevention Month. And Liberty House is the local child advocacy center serving Marion and Polk Counties, where we help children refer to us for concerns of abuse. We also have trauma-focused therapy and then our prevention department, which does free child safety trainings in the community.
Yeah, we're providing trainings all throughout the month of April, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday in English and Spanish so that everyone can have access to the important material. We were asked a while ago to present about what we do to prevent child abuse. What we do is we empower other people. We help people become advocates for children's safety in the community, and we encourage people to take our classes, to learn what you can do to prevent child abuse.
Well, thank you so much for what you are doing tonight. I'm going to be reading a proclamation and ask you to take this copy with you as our way of saying thank you and that we are all partners in this work to end and prevent child abuse in Kaiser, Kaiser-Salem, and our region. Does anybody have any questions? All right, I will read the proclamation, which says as follows. Whereas every child deserves to live in a safe, loving, and caring family environment; and whereas in 2023 there were 11,191 reported victims of child abuse and neglect in Oregon, of which 979 were victims in Marion County; and whereas we stand together as individuals, organizations, and government agencies to commit to preventing child abuse in our county by raising awareness throughout the community and by educating and supporting caregivers; and whereas we assert that strong families and safe, stable, and nurturing environments free from violence, abuse, and neglect are essential for children's optimal growth and success, which ensures a secure future for our communities where the needs of children are a priority and the needs of families are met. Now therefore, I, Kathy Clark, Mayor of the City of Kaiser, together with the Kaiser City Council, assembled here in regular session, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2025 as Child Abuse Prevention Month and ask that everyone commit to protecting our children. Thank you very much.
Would you please join us because of your great work in this area?
I would like to say that it's many youth-serving organizations and law enforcement and the county that come together in April for Child Abuse Prevention Month together to help spread awareness. So not only Liberty House, but CASA, and the Y, and Boys and Girls Club, all of us. So it's great.
Things are delicious.
It does. It does.
Yeah, everybody smile. You think that's it?
Thank you so much. Thank you.
To wrap up our special orders of business tonight, we are going to be recognizing our city staff with the Oregon OSHA Health and Safety and Health Achievement Recognition Program. And there's a presentation. City manager?
Yes, the leader of our safety team, Jeff Hein, is here to accept this award. And we have somebody from Oregon OSHA here, and so...
Come on up.
This is a year that's, a project that precedes me, but five years of work, and I think actually started even before that. It's been seven years. So if y'all could briefly tell our council what this is about and then explain why we're here today.
Sure. Good evening. My name is Jennifer Ekdahl, and I'm a health consultant with Oregon OSHA Consultation. And I actually started this process with the City of Kaiser in 2018. And you basically, City of Kaiser became the first year Sharp in 2019. I brought along with me my team members. This is Tim Nelson. He is a safety consultant, and him and I were the ones that worked with you guys the last couple of years. I brought my boss, Trina Vanderhayde. She manages the Salem Field Office, the Bend Office, and the Pendleton Office for consultation. And then I brought Renee Stapleton here, who's our administrator for Oregon OSHA. And so I just wanted to introduce ourselves. I do want to congratulate you. This is a huge accomplishment. I can tell you, when we started in 2018, there were quite a few things that we had to work on and get... In order to be a Sharp employer, you have to meet all of our rules that apply to you. So we start digging into all your written programs, your training programs. We walk around all your facilities. This included Public Works, Police Department, and City Hall. And we identify hazards, and then City of Kaiser has to agree to fix all of those hazards. So it's quite the accomplishment to become a Sharp employer. And in addition to that, you have to keep your injuries low. So we compare your injury rate to the rest of the cities in the nation, and we want you to be lower than the rest of the average. So it's a huge accomplishment. And from there, I'm going to pass it along to Renee. She has a few words to share with you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Good evening. My name is Renee Stapleton, and I am the administrator for Oregon OSHA, and I am very excited to be here with you today. As Jennifer pointed out, this is a tremendous accomplishment. The City of Kaiser is joining an elite group of employers who have graduated from the Oregon Safe and Safety and Health Achievement Recognition Program, often called Sharp. The City of Kaiser has done something that no other city in Oregon has done. One city tried, had a department that graduated, but it was only one department. You are the only city in the history of our Sharp program that has achieved it as a city. So that is something absolutely outstanding, and you should be very proud of yourself. In 2017, the Sharp, the city started the Sharp process by asking for a pre-Sharp evaluation, and during this initial process, there was a number of things that needed attention: processes and programs, and just attention towards the safety and health of your workers. And then, once those pieces were put together, then we went and did a full evaluation, which started in the 2019 timeframe. The city administration prioritized the corrections, and by June of 2019, they received their first Sharp recognition. Employee interviews every year found that employees believed that management made workplace safety a priority, and their voices are heard. Throughout the COVID pandemic, the city closely worked with Oregon OSHA to ensure appropriate precautions were taken, and they adapted quickly to the ever-changing environment. In 2022, there was a bump in the road due to elevated injury and illness rates compared to the national and Oregon averages, which resulted in a probationary period. But during this year, you guys had the opportunity to develop a work rate reduction plan to help focus your efforts in driving down your injury and illness rates. This journey has not always been easy, but the city has persevered. The Sharp executive summary states, "Based on the scores for the Safety and Health Program Assessment Worksheet, our observations and interviews evaluating programs that add great value to safety and health program management conducted by the city's team, it is our recommendation to Oregon OSHA consultation managers and the executive staff to recognize the City of Kaiser in Kaiser, Oregon, as a Sharp graduate." The City of Kaiser has consistently followed through with all evaluations, trainings, programs, and procedures for both safety and health of all employees. And with that, I want to officially congratulate the City of Kaiser for graduating from the Sharp program. Congratulations.
So we have basically your last plaque that you get to hang on your wall, and we also have a flag that you can fly saying that you're a Sharp graduate. Tim has the honors to...
So, yep, this is city staff. I would invite all of our department ELT to be behind Jeff. Adam? Yep.
Where would you like us?
Yep.
You want me in the pic, too?
Yeah.
This was definitely teamwork.
Okay, Joe. Joe Shane, at the other end. Okay, everybody ready?
Say safety.
Joe, you didn't get very far, Joe. All right. Everybody say, what's this for? Safety. All right, thank you.
Now, don't trip.
Yeah.
No slips, no falls.
I'm going to get him to that. The bubble and that thing over there. I'm going to get him to that.
The threshold?
Yeah.
Again, congratulations to the staff of the City of Kaiser for this great achievement, putting employee safety and well-being as a primary function of how we operate as a city. Congratulations. We are going to go to committee reports. I have had a request, however, to take one item out of order, and that would be Item 8A, the Event Center Fee Waiver for the Third Annual Salem-Kaiser FFA BBQ and Cow Pie Bingo, so our students can come and present. Is there anybody who objects to taking that one out of order for our students? I hear of no objection. Ms. Trout, come on down and bring these wonderful students with you so we can learn about Cow Pie Bingo. Let's not tip the cows.
Hello, Mayor Clark and city councilors, and thank you for having us here. My name's Cassidy Trout. I am a volunteer. I am a FFA alumni, and I am above all the mother to two FFA members in our local chapter. As a teenager, I really didn't understand what benefits I would receive from being an FFA. I didn't get what I could gain from competitions like job interview and parliamentary procedure and public speaking. Now, as a small business owner and an active community member, I use those skills every single day. And I love helping our youth also learn those skills. We do that in various ways. We help by building premier leadership within our youth. We offer chapter leadership, and we offer various competitions. We are coming to you guys with the request to waive the fees for the venue for our Third Annual FFA BBQ and Cow Pie Bingo. Some of you guys have attended the event before, and it's a lot of fun. If you don't know what it is, we make a big grid, 225 squares. We number them, and we release a cow. And wherever she does her business, that person wins $1,000. It's a lot of fun. It raises a ton of money for our student... Oh, last year, I think Kaiser's own Tim Davis won. He was. He was the winner. We, this money helps us fund lots of programs. It helps send our kids to national convention in Indianapolis, to state convention, and helps fund various competitions throughout the year. We also would like to, this year, start an in-house loan program for some of our kids to purchase animals for the Marion County Fair. We have a lot of low-income students at McKay and in our FFA program, and some of them don't have the $400 to $600 to buy a lamb or a goat right off the bat. And we want to be able to offer them that opportunity and be able to pay that loan back whenever they auction their animal. So those are the reasons. Now, I'm going to stop talking and let some of our students introduce them. Now, I'm going to stop talking and let some of our students introduce themselves and kind of tell you a little bit about what they've gained and their future plans.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Alina Santiago. I am a junior at McKay High School. It is my third year in the FFA. I've served as chapter sentinel and chapter secretary. Through my time in the FFA, it's taught me a lot of leadership skills, a lot of responsibility. I mainly focus a lot of my competitions in public speaking. So like the FFA Creed, job interview, as well as extemporaneous speaking. So that's what I mainly focus on. It's taught me to be able to come up and be able to speak in front of all of you guys. Because I think if you would ask my freshman self to come up here, I wouldn't, I would say no, for sure. Yeah, that's basically, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Memphis Yuco. I'd like to say thank you to all the city councilors and the mayor. I'm a senior this year at McKay High School. I've served four years in the Salem Kaiser FFA chapter. I've been the chapter treasurer twice and vice president. And just last year, I was the capital district treasurer. The skills I've learned in FFA have, will help me and have helped me as I'm talking in front of all of you today. These skills will help me in the future with any business I need to help just run or talk or anything of that sort. I've, I show market lambs. I've shown market lambs for the past four years, and that in itself is a skill that's going to help me just put myself out there, go talk to buyers, go in an actual auction ring and learn how it is to have people look at you and still be calm enough to show your animal appropriately. As a senior, I'm going to be graduating this year. This summer, in August, I ship out to Oklahoma in Fort Still for my basic training. And then from there, I go to San Antonio for my medical training to be a combat medic in the Army National Guard. And I want to thank you guys so much. This FFA program has helped me through the past four years with so many opportunities, meeting people, making friends, meeting some of you guys and knowing you a little bit more personally. And I want to give this opportunity to the freshmen coming in or anyone in the future to have this opportunity to be able to come speak in front of a city council. If I knew I was going to do this as a freshman, I'd freak out. Because who, I don't know anyone in the city council back then. But now, with all this experience, I can sit here calmly and speak to you guys about my future and how much this FFA has helped me. I want to say thank you.
Thank you very much. Well done. Yes, indeed. Council members, do you have any questions for our students here today? Counselor Christopher?
I actually have a question probably for Cassidy. So I was raised in Idaho Falls, Idaho. And so I know FFA, Future Farmers of America. You didn't tell us what the FFA was for. I didn't, there's nobody I didn't know that wasn't in FFA. And so I love how this program's going. Last year, I was at your event. Counselor Duran invited me, and I sat at his table. And you, these kids are so impressive. You know, the book that you put together, I mean, every single kid was just outstanding. So it's a fabulous program. I want to help you in any way you can, and I can. And I wanted to know, so tell me more about this loaning to buy a sheep, or I would like to do that. So how do I do that? How do I loan somebody the money to buy one of those?
Sorry, does that have your microphone?
It's okay. I mean, at any time, you can donate directly to our Salem Kaiser FFA Alumni Fund. That money goes, it can go directly to that loan program. We also use that fund for a scholarship program, which last year, we funded over $2,400 in scholarships to our Salem Kaiser FFA alumni. And just an added bonus, in the last two years, I think the number was 14 of our Salem Kaiser FFA students were accepted into OSU.
Yeah. So Cassidy, give it a URL, or how do we?
SalemKaiserFFA.Square is our donation site. Yeah, it's a square site.
SalemKaiserFFA.Square?
Yep.
Any other questions? Thank you so much. Council President Starr, would you please put a motion on the table for us?
Absolutely. Being born and raised in Pendleton, Oregon, go FFA.
We're cowgirls.
I move the Kaiser City Council approve the requested waiver of the Event Center use fee of $2,550, but charge $300 for security and $1,150 for the refundable security deposit for the Third Annual Salem Kaiser FFA BBQ and Cow Pie Bingo event on October 25, 2025.
I second that, but I'm from Pendleton, too. Yes.
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council approve the requested waiver of the Event Center use fee for $2,550, but charge $300 for security and $1,150 for the refundable security deposit for the Third Annual Salem Kaiser FFA BBQ and Cow Pie Bingo event on October 25, 2025. I do want to clarify for the record of anybody watching, the Cow Pie Bingo, as described, does not occur right here in the event center, but is watched on video. So for anybody who's, any city slickers who are watching, or anyway. The cow does what the cow does. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, signify by saying no. Hearing no objection. Motion passes unanimously. And thank you so much for bringing this to Kaiser. Appreciate it. All right, we are now going to circle back to our regularly scheduled agenda, and we are going to go to our committee reports, which will, item 5A, the Northwest Kaiser Neighborhood Association Annual Report and Presentation of Bylaws. So all the representatives for Northwest Kaiser Neighborhood Association are invited up. Pull up an extra chair, however you need. And we do have a copy of your report in front of us and also in the packet. And for folks watching at home, it is posted. Well, this is northeast. It's in the packet. It's northwest.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Madam City Council President, and City Council Members. I'm Hersh Sangster. I'm the current president of the Northwest Kaiser Neighborhood Association.
And I'm Griffin Walker. I'm the co-chair, co-president, vice president of our neighborhood association.
You already have our packet and our annual report, which is quite detailed, so I'm not going to read it to you, but I want to hit some highlights. We meet every third Wednesday at 7 o'clock, our general meetings here at the Civic Center. We currently have six board members, three officers, and three members at large. We have one opening. And we'll be beginning this month to elect new officers and board members. And it looks like we have a pretty much a full slate. Some of the big projects that we've tried to get involved in is we jump-started working with both the city and McNary High School JRE ROTC program, graffiti training program. And it's a special thanks to Ben Crosby for training the young men and women at this project. We're going to do some on Newburgh Wednesday evening. We also were involved in organizing a community information and a bike skills event. And this last Thursday, we fitted about 49 helmets at Kaiser Elementary as part of their culture club meeting. So we've done our first national night out. It was overwhelming success. So I just wanted to thank you, and this is the Northwest Kaiser Neighborhood Association.
Our website continues to be our primary method of outreach to the neighborhood. We feature upcoming meetings and meeting notes on there, different community events, local businesses, links to tools on the city website, and neighborhood photos on a contact form, which is pretty widely used. We saw a pretty drastic increase in traffic this past year. We launched the website last year. This year, we saw over 500 total users and 935 unique views, which means a lot of those users were viewing more than one page on the site and came back. That was from April of last year to February of this year. We have a email address, info@northwestkaiser.org, that anybody can email us, and that goes to our entire board, so that our board, any board member can answer that. This year, we designed and created banners for different events. We also created flyers. Hersh is going to model one of the things that we just created this year, too, which is our T-shirts. I have to, I have to admit, we did engage in a very light amount of deception this year as a board because we did not tell Hersh that we were getting him a limited edition orange shirt when the rest of us did not get those. And those of you that know Hersh know why that is not, or orange and not green. We also post regularly to our Facebook page our, a couple of local Kaiser Facebook groups and to the social media network next door. All of our meeting agendas and minutes are on our website. And thanks to the City Recorder, they're also up on the City of Kaiser website. We continue to get time, expertise, and continued support for both design and maintenance of marketing materials and the website donated to us by one of our board members. And in the future, we plan on running another national night out this year, expanding our community graffiti program. And we are going to be doing more outreach work with the other neighborhood associations as well.
I'd like to also have an opportunity to thank Counselor Kohler for filling in as our liaison and really giving us a lot of counsel and insight and littler support for this last year. So thank you. For the Northwest Kaiser Neighborhood Association.
All right. Thank you very much. Council members, any questions for the Northwest Kaiser Neighborhood Association? Counselor Kohler?
Mr. Sangster, just a couple of things. I can't believe you did something with bikes with the Neighborhood Association. Just can't hardly believe that. And then, I just wondered about this graffiti training. So you're training people how to do graffiti?
Well.
No. Would you expand just a little bit on that? Because I think it's an amazing thing that you're doing, and I just want to make sure that everybody knows what you're doing.
Well, working with Ben and Senior Master Sergeant Hammond at McNary High School, the cadets had to learn how to do it right because of how to paint it. And Ben did a training session on March 1st. We were at the infamous Temper Lane Tunnel, and he was showing them how to paint and over it and techniques of using goof-off and everything. But the other thing that he did teach them is how to, on the computer system that he operates, how to take pictures, log it, and log it off, too. So we did all of Temper Lane, the kids did. And we'll be doing on Newburgh, because it got tagged last week on Newburgh. And so the sergeant said, let's try something right after school, and Ben's going to come over. And the Neighborhood Association did allocate some monies to keep it going, too. One of the things that we found out in doing the Temper Lane Tunnel was we need to get some masks, so. So we're going to get some. Thank you. Is that a answer?
Yeah, just, it's a graffiti abatement training.
Yeah.
Not a graffiti training, anyway.
It's a whole program. I just want to make that clear. It's not just a training. They have structured meetings when they go out as a group, and they take care of areas that the city had been informed of as having been tagged. So continue to reach out to the city through the means of the website, and then Ben will work with this organization to have these scheduled meetings. Thanks anyway.
Amazing.
Really appreciate that very creative and community engagement type of activity to make sure that we all get something we need and that we all then can get involved. So thank you for leading the way on that. Very much appreciated. It's not just your neighborhood association.
No, and we're not doing it just in Northwest. It's all over Kaiser.
Excellent. Any other questions for the Northwest Kaiser Neighborhood Association? Council President Starr, would you please put a motion on the table?
Absolutely. If I could ask Mr. Lindsay a procedural question. Do you want me to take the motions one at a time?
Yes, unless it was obvious that it was going to be.
I'll just take them one at a time.
Yeah, yeah.
I move that Kaiser City Council accept the report of the Northwest Kaiser Neighborhood Association and extend recognition to the Northwest Kaiser Neighborhood Association for an additional year.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council accept the report of the Northwest Kaiser Neighborhood Association and extend recognition to the Northwest Kaiser Neighborhood Association for an additional year. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, signify by saying no. Hearing no objection. Motion passes unanimously. Council President Starr?
I move that the Kaiser City Council accept the bylaws of the Northwest Kaiser Neighborhood Association.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council accept the bylaws of the Northwest Kaiser Neighborhood Association. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, signify by saying no. Hearing no objection. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We will now shift a little eastward to the Greater Northeast Kaiser Neighborhood Association for the Annual Report and Presentation of Bylaws. Madam Mayor, Council President Starr, and city councilors, we are Greater Northeast Kaiser Neighborhood Association. Is the microphone on? It is. Pull it up. Okay. Thank you, sorry. Better? Yes, thank you. All right. We've given you two reports, a really long one and then a short summary. But I just wanted to touch on a couple of things. We are a little different from everybody else because we are doing a hybrid meeting. We do more online setting to meet the needs of our community, which is working really, really well. We've gone from having two to three to average of 15 to 27 per meeting. So it seems to be working really well for us. I've given you all of that data as well in my big packet. We worked really hard on community engagement this past year, and it has been extremely beneficial, extremely costly, one we are not doing this year. Other than our normal collaboration with the other neighborhood associations, we're just going to get back to basics. I don't have anything else to add because you guys literally have a book in front of you. Yes, your report is very thorough, and thank you for all of the pieces that you did provide for us, as is required in the resolutions. We appreciate that. So I will open it up to council members if you have questions for the Greater Northeast Kaiser Neighborhood Association. All right, there are no questions. Again, a big thank you for the work and the creativity of going hybrid and helping lead the way on that.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Lindsay?
I do have one question.
Yes.
Because when I looked in their packet for their, because you guys are going to also be looking at their bylaws. And there was, if you look on page 131 of your packet, which has their finalized. which has their finalized laws, there was a few areas that kind of still left open for percentages. And so, I wanted to point them out, just so you could solidify them today here and get blessing for them. And so, it says, "Special meetings may be called by the board or upon petition by." And then it says, "Specified percentage of members." I would assume probably a quorum of members, so we could make that change for you.
Perfect.
Yeah, and then likewise, it says, "For a quorum, a quorum for a meeting shall be," and it says, "Specified percentage." I would say over half, right? A majority?
A majority, yes.
Okay, simple majority. I just wanted to clarify those things, so that their bylaws were... They know exactly what they're dealing with, and you guys know what they're dealing with.
Thank you, Joe.
Yeah, for sure.
So, this will be as amended?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, with those two changes.
Thank you, Marlene, for coming to our meetings and providing support.
So, Councilor Parsons, are you the... Who's liaison this year?
No, she filled in for Sarada.
No, it's Councilor Cross. I just filled in this last time.
Okay.
And it was great. The hybrid worked really well. I appreciate it being invited. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Any other questions? Yeah, Councilor Kohler?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. How many members of the board do you have? How many board members do you have?
Board member, seven.
Seven, thank you.
All right. With that, Council President Starr, would you put a motion on the table for us, please?
I move that Kaiser City Council accept the report of the Greater Northeast Kaiser Neighborhood Association and extend recognition to the Greater Northeast Kaiser Neighborhood Association for an additional year.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council accept the report of the Greater Northeast Kaiser Neighborhood Association and extend recognition to the Greater Northeast Kaiser Neighborhood Association for an additional year. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, signify by saying no. Hearing no objection, motion passes unanimously. Council President Starr?
I move that the Kaiser City Council accept the bylaws as amended of the Greater Northeast Kaiser Neighborhood Association.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council accept the bylaws as amended of the Greater Northeast Kaiser Neighborhood Association. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, signify by saying no. Hearing no objection, motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Appreciate your work. That takes us to item 8C, which is the Community Diversity Engagement Committee Appointments and Counselor Liaison Appointment for the CDEC. Counselor Christopher?
So, I have a request, and that is there's two vacant positions, yours and mine. And my person is here tonight. I don't know if your person is here. But I promised him he wouldn't have to spend the whole night here. So, I would like, if the council would allow, I'd like to do the two vacant positions, and then the counselor do theirs.
We're just going to go down the line, one through seven. Name them off. So, it's very simpler, very simple.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much. With that, I... Let's see. Sorry. This is a council appointment, so it is up to us at this point to fill the positions. So, as I just said, I'm going to go down the list. I have all the wrong numbers here. Okay, starting with position number one, which is Counselor Parsons.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had the opportunity of filling in the other night on this committee, and I have to say that we're taking what we say and really acting on it. I had a conversation with Benita. She was the appointed person before I came on. And we had a talk, and I explained to Benita that I thought I could appoint before, and I was wrong, and I already had somebody lined up. And she's like, "Look, I'll step back, put that person in." She was very fine with that, and so I'm going to appoint Robin Barney.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Position number two, Council President Starr?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As I did, when I was able to appoint a volunteer coordinating committee person, I made a change, and I will be making a change this time and appointing Sarah Ngo, and that's spelled N-G-O for the record.
Is she here?
She is not here, no, not able to make it.
Okay. And council, the position number three is Counselor Duran.
I, at this time also, am going to make a change. I'm going to appoint Larry Porter.
Is he here?
He's not here.
And Counselor Cross, she told me that she gave her appointment information to Ms. Bisit. Do you have that handy?
She actually decided she would make her appointment on April 21st.
Okay. So, that position is currently being held by Carrie Brown. Okay? So, yeah, she had emailed that she was going to do that. Counselor Christopher?
I have... Fausto, do you want to come down? Don't be scared. My appointment is Fausto Ramos. Come down here. You're going to be great. And I just want to tell you a little bit about him. I said, "Fausto, give me a paragraph about your background, so I can share it." And this is what he has written. "I was born and raised here in the Salem-Kaiser area. My family did a lot of road tripping, because my grandparents and great-grandma lived in Los Angeles. I graduated from McKay High School in 2009, then attended Shemeketa Community College, then Western Oregon University. I have great..." This is my very favorite part. "A great fun fact about me was he was a competitive breakdancer from ages 15 to 25, and he also studied contemporary dance and ballet from ages 21 through 25 at Tippy Toe Dance Studio. I work at Valor Mentoring and the Rec Lanes as the general manager for their facilities, and he's been there for four years, and he loves it. He enjoys cooking, reading, hiking, and the Northwest. And later this year..." What will you be doing later this year, Fausto?
Possibly getting married.
Possibly. I hope she's not in the audience.
It's not like that. We're looking for a nice mother time.
Thank you, Ray. So, everyone, I want to introduce you to Fausto Ramos, and I'm so happy.
Thank you. Counselor Kohler, position six.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would first like to thank Jane for the time that she spent with the committee. Some of the testimony that she gave to the council over the last couple of months, she said, "We need to have all kinds of diversity on the committee," and that really pricked my heart. And so, what I'd like to do is sign a Hispanic mail. A friend of mine, his name is Guillermo Rodriguez.
Is he here?
He's not here.
Okay. And I appoint position number seven, and I will be appointing Jane Tichinal. Okay, we have everybody but position four, and we have to wait for Counselor Cross to do that when she gets back. And I believe she will be here on the 21st. Okay.
And Your Honor? Or...
That's not the first time.
Your Honor.
Yes, Mr. Lindsay?
There is the matter of just making sure that the VCC now is set up to do the process of the youth person. And so, I just wanted to remind the council, is that indeed the way that you guys want to proceed? Is that through the VCC for the youth?
That is correct.
Okay, perfect.
That was the change we made in the resolution at the last meeting, and we wanted it to... We made that change. So, yes, the youth position will be appointed through the VCC process, similar to our youth counselor. And we encourage any students, either at McNary High School or a student that is private or homeschooled and resident of Kaiser, to apply for that position. Okay. And with that, we will go to item... Let me check my agenda here. Okay. 85D, which is the Volunteer Coordinating Committee Recommendations for Appointments, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, Budget Committee, Traffic Safety, Bike Ways and Pedestrian Committee, and Kaiser Public Arts Commission. Ms. Bisit?
Madam and city councilors, the Volunteer Coordinating Committee met on March 13th to review and interview applicants for openings on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, Budget Committee, Traffic Safety, Bike Ways and Pedestrian Committee, and the Public Arts Commission. They have recommended to you to appoint Liam Stitt to the youth position for the Parks and Rec Advisory Board for the school year term 25-26. Appoint Bruce Anderson to position five of the Budget Committee for a term expiring August 31st, 2026. Trevor Lewis to position numbers four of the Traffic Safety, Bike Ways and Pedestrian Committee for a term expiring December 31st, 2027. And appoint Claire Duran to position number four to the Kaiser Arts Commission for a term expiring June 30th, 2027.
All right, thank you very much. Are there any questions on the recommendations or the staff report? Council President Starr, would you please put a motion on the table?
I move that Kaiser City Council accept the recommendations of the Volunteer Coordinating Committee and appoint Liam Stitt to the youth liaison position of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board for school year term 2025-2026. Appoint Bruce Anderson to position number five of the Budget Committee for the term expiring August 31st, 2026. Trevor Lewis to position number four of the Traffic Safety, Bike Ways and Pedestrian Committee for the term expiring December 31st, 2027. And appointing Claire Duran to position number four to the Kaiser Public Arts Commission for the term expiring June 30th, 2027.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council accept the recommendations of the Volunteer Coordinating Committee and appoint Liam Stitt to the youth liaison position of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board for the school year term of 2025-2026. Appoint Bruce Anderson to position number five of the Budget Committee for the term expiring August 31st, 2026. Trevor Lewis to position number four of the Traffic Safety, Bike Ways and Pedestrian Committee for the term expiring December 31st, 2027. And appoint Claire Duran to position number four of the Kaiser Public Arts Commission for a term expiring June 30th, 2027. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please signify by saying no. Hearing no objection, motion passes unanimously. I would like to ask at this time if the city council would have any objection to moving the report from our youth counselor from the end of the meeting, which under council member reports, to committee reports. And I will bring this up later to make this a permanent change, if you are so willing. Is there any objection to having our youth liaison speak? No. Hearing no objection. Youth counselor, Lady Farrar, it's good to see you.
It's very good to see everybody as well. It feels like it's been so long. Well, so far, our girls' flag football team has kicked off, and we have two games this week, the ninth and the 11th, so Friday and Wednesday. Our choir is going to the Choir Festival at Shemeketa tomorrow. It will be our concert choir and our Highlander Classic. Our concert choir is just going for fun, but our Highlander Classic is competing for state, so that's exciting. We have our prom this Saturday coming up, so juniors and seniors will be at the Zenith Vineyard, I'm pretty sure is how you say it. So, that's exciting. But on a sad note, we did lose our former counselor this morning, Leah Anderson. So, that was a really devastating loss for our school's community, and she was dearly loved by a lot of people in our school. So, this morning, we just took a late start to really process that information. And that's all I have.
All right, thank you so much. And also, our heartfelt condolences go out to the McNary and South High School communities at the very sudden and unexpected passing of Leah Anderson. And I hope all of the staff and students know how much we, as a community, wrap around, our arms around you and want you to know that we're here to listen and grieve with you. Thank you so much. All right, we are now going to go to public comment. Hang on, I forgot something. That's what I forget for not getting everything out in advance. There it is. I found it. Oh, do we... Oh, do we have a... Sorry, I may have missed one. Thank you. It's committee report for... Traffic Safety, come on down. Thank you so much, I forgot to ask.
I'm Brenda Lamb. I'm here for the Traffic Safety, Bike Ways, and Pedestrian Committee. So, since this last meeting that we had, we're currently interested in... We've been talking for the whole time I've been on committee about whether or not pedestrian flags would be a good option for Kaiser. With the help of Tammy Salvador, we've, and myself, and working with Adam and the lawyer and Mike Griffin, we've came up with an idea that might help us make a decision if that's something that would work for Kaiser. Many locations use pedestrian flags. In some locations, it's been a huge success and promotes safety, and the cities actually support this in one form or another. Other places, such as Portland, the city itself does not promote or have anything to do with the flags, but they're all over the place. So, our committee, or me and Tammy, we're concerned that public flags can be just put anywhere in Kaiser as well. But if we have a program in place, then they have to go, like, put an application in, go through Public Works, make sure it's a safe location before they can just put flags up. So, that's the program that we are trying to work through. The pilot that we are working on right now is also working through the process to see if this process that we're using is also going to function. So, this last meeting, West Kaiser Neighborhood Association submitted a form for a flag, pedestrian flags, at the Shemawa between Welsh Way and 15th Street, where the crosswalk is. Many people are crossing the street there to go walk at Kaiser Rapids, and there's a lot of traffic now, especially with those new ball fields. So, getting the attention of cars going by so that you can safely cross that crosswalk during the heavy time that's coming. So, this pilot will run from June to December, giving us an opportunity to see if this is going to work for Kaiser or if this is just, like, for whatever reason, not going to work. There's going to be QR code on the holders on either side of the street, so people can take a picture of that QR code and give public comment. The Northwest, the West Kaiser Association is going to make sure the flags are there, so they'll be checking them regularly to make sure there's flags on either side. What else do I have for you? Then the Kaiser will also... The association will give feedback on whether or not that's working for them as well. So, we honestly don't know how this is going to work for our town. So, we'd like to find out if this is something that currently is a great idea. Personally, I think it's a fabulous idea. I hope it works for Kaiser, because it's affordable. This pilot, the city is helping us with some funds, but the program itself that we wrote is not supposed to be funded by the city at all. It'll just be the city saying, "Yes, you can have your flags there," and then verifying that that's actually functioning by driving by and going, "Yes, they're putting flags on both sides of the road, and it's a safe place for the flags to be." But the Neighborhood Association or the volunteers that are putting those flags out are responsible for the cost. Not the pilot, but if the pilot's successful, the program is expecting the individuals putting the flags out to pay for it. Am I... Kathy, you look like you have a question.
I do. Can we press pause for a second, Mr. Brown? I understood that the purchase and installation of the flags and so forth would be done by our staff. Is that correct?
No, Madam Mayor and council. We just told them we would provide them some funds to get the products. They have to run the locations by us and get the mount, whenever it's going to be mounted, approved by us.
Okay, so it will be installed by... In places and... Done in a way that's appropriate with city facilities, and the funds are being provided by the city through our transportation dollars? Is that correct? It is through transportation dollars. Okay, so city funds going to you for then carry out this pilot program. Okay, that makes sense. Counselor Duran?
So, who takes liability for the install on this? I mean, if they're not installed by city staff, who's liable for installation if there's an issue?
What's installation?
Well, they have to be mounted.
Yeah, it's pretty low risk, zip-tied to the... To whatever pole fits, probably a street city sign.
So city's taking responsibility.
Okay. So another question, then we can come back to Council President Starr.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Brown, are there any success stories of this program working in the state of Oregon? Because I don't know that there's anyone currently doing it now.
The city I came from was doing it, and it ran successfully for the six years I was there, and I don't even know if, how many years before I got there. It hasn't changed since I left.
And it's still going? But are there, are there any cities where they tried it and it didn't work?
I think we've saw some news stories of different places across the country that it hasn't worked or has worked. I've visited just recently a couple cities, one in Idaho where I was, came to a stop sign and saw a young lady walking, crossing the street with a flag, and then also, I think it was in Pullman, Washington, also I saw some flags.
What is ODOT's perspective on the program?
I do not know. Yep. We'll look at that after the pilot program, make sure we include that in the final recommendation.
Yeah, I also saw the same up in Everett, Washington. We were there last year, and there they were beautifully attached to the sides, and somebody grabbed it and walked across the street. Council, uh, Councilor Parsons?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
The one thing I have is, when you talk about liability, somebody grabs the flag and walks, I mean, just grabs the flag and walks, they get hit, who's liable? The guy that hit him or because they had the flag? So we're not, we're not liable, right?
We're not liable, right?
Some, the, they're only allowed to be placed where there is a crosswalk now.
Oh, okay.
So it's, it's no different. We're trying to improve the safety, a step up.
Okay, I just thought it was corner to corner, but it's an actual crosswalk.
Yeah.
And just so you know, the answer is, it depends, as all legal questions, right? If you're actually in the crosswalk, if you're doing something crazy, if the driver's doing something crazy. So it's a situation by situation.
I just want to also clarify that it's a very controlled process that we're making sure is as safe as possible. So it is a marked crosswalk, as we just indicated. It's a road that is a non arterial, so it has to be a collector or neighborhood road, so 30 miles an hour or less, because anything beyond that, we need other protective measures. We're not going to invite folks to cross the street in a unsafe environment. It's just to draw attention at a crosswalk to help with the visualization of that.
And if I can build on her, that's exactly why we're looking at this pilot, is to make sure Kaiser has control of that, because if we don't have a program, it's not illegal to put flags wherever you want. So then we wouldn't actually have as much control of where the flags are put.
Yes, and the application does ask questions such as what are the flags made of, what are the sizes, what is the holder going to be, and then we're working with the Public Works Department for that approval, so not anybody can just do that. We're making sure that it's done correctly. And if there, at any point in time, it's determined it's not safe, it will be removed immediately. And so each application has somebody responsible for each location that we can reach out to at any point in time to either communicate that it's not functioning correctly, or there was a situation and it got removed, whatever the circumstances happen to be. And, and we're looking for feedback on this, so over the course of time, we welcome what that is, positive or negative, and then we can decide as a city if this is right to keep or not, and then move forward from there.
Thank you. I'm going to go back to Councilor Duran.
I don't remember how long ago it was, but city assistants used this going across the highway. And, well, it's slow. It's, it's, it's 25 miles an hour through there. But it seemed like there was only one or two, whenever they were doing it, there was only one or two flags. They seemed to go missing quite often, it seemed like. So I think they quit doing it because of the loss of the, the flags. I didn't, I asked a business owner there one time about it, and that's what they told me, and the city just hadn't kept up with it, so that. Last time I was there, I did not see any flags, so.
Well, I'm going to add that the last time I was there, coming back from, I think it was League of Oregon Cities, we stopped at that snow cap, and sure enough, there's flags there. We watched, I think they might have restocked some of those for the, that season, and we saw somebody grab one and crossed the street with it, so. Anyway, not, not made to contradict, but perhaps they came back, yeah. Council President Starr?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Brown, this is a pilot project. Does the, does, where does the decision lie? Does it lie with council or with staff to adopt the program fully in the future?
Madam, Council President, I, we would probably bring it back to the City Council to get the approval or disapproval of it.
Great, thank you.
Anything further? Okay. Anything more for the committee?
We went through all our projects and had a, it was mostly review of projects, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Are there any other committee reports that I missed? Councilor Christopher?
I know, it's weird. I, Becca Brisbane was supposed to give it, but she was unable to, so I told her I would do it for her.
For?
For Kaiser Public Arts Commission, sorry. So the current show that's out in the hallway on the two galleries is Joe Nickle. It's, it's a, it's a great show. It got lots of attention during the Rotary Party, which was Saturday. And Becca made the motion that the Kaiser Fest display, we usually display all of the prior posters, but that cuts out two months for a potential local artist to be able to present. So she made the motion to not have the Kaiser Fest posters in hopes that we'll get a local artist that wants to display. If not, we can always put those up at a later date. So, and that was a unanimous decision. We selected the, or they selected the holiday card this year. You don't get to see it because it's not time, but the name of it is called Christmas Dog.
Here's a hint.
That's a little hint. The commissioners also talked about the, the story poles in front. They are in need of some paint touch-up and reseal, so that will be happening this year. We also talked about how there are three additional box wraps that are in progress, and they're going to be completed by... Come on.
I don't have the date. I, I would suspect within, probably about the end of the month, because the boxes are ready and the prints were, should have been sent to the printer by now.
Great. And so anybody can, anybody can participate in this program. The, you need to get artwork, and then the artwork has to come in front of K-PAC, and they have to approve the artwork, but it can be anything. Well, not really. It can't be like naked bowlers. And so, but anything that is not, well, anyway, I know. So, but all you have to do is, it has to be artwork that you can prove ownership of, and so you, you have to do that, or we pay the artist $200 for taking their art and putting it on the utility boxes. There's 13 utility boxes. We have six or seven that are already claimed or in, or in process, but that needs plenty, so you can do that. In addition to that, the K-PAC is waiting on Public Works. K-PAC is waiting on Public Works to approve the street art program that Tammy Saldivar presented to us. K-PAC really likes that program and wants to move forward with it, but we need your approval to say, yes, you can do it, it's okay. So as soon as that is done, Tammy, then it will go into the final version. If, if Public Works makes any changes, the final version will then go into the master plan, and then we get started and start painting the roads. I just want to give you that update. The other thing is, the discussion was, our galleries, the artists that have found our galleries love our galleries. So they come back every year, they want to continue to come back. And K-PAC talked about, how do we hold space open for new folks that have not yet been able to display? Because we get a lot of people in here, and particularly in the summer months, there's a lot of people that would be present to view that art, and these are usually, well, they're all local artists, and they're trying to be able to establish themselves as working artists. So we want to give as many opportunities to those folks as possible. So they don't have a solution yet, but that's what they're considering. At the next meeting, we were all charged with coming back with some ideas of how we cannot lose the artists that we love and we love to see them display, but at the same time, hold open at least one space or two spaces to add every year so that we can get new folks in. That's it.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions on the Kaiser Public Arts? All right. Anything else for committee reports? Okay, we're going to public comment. This time is provided for citizens to address the council on any matters other than those on the agenda scheduled for public hearing. We have one, two, three, four, five, six public hearings scheduled for this evening. So if you're here for one of those, please stand by. And I haven't done this in a while, but I've been asked as a review to read the guidelines that are posted by, in the back of the room. So these are just common guidelines for our public comment. So you're, and not everybody always remembers, but you're asked to state your name and city of residence for the record. You have five minutes, it's our turn to talk, or, I'm sorry, your turn to talk and ours to listen. You're responsible for the content of your comments, even if you're reading something written by someone else. The council may ask clarifying questions, and the mayor will refer to staff for readily available information or follow-up as necessary. We ask that you direct all comments to the presiding officer. That would be moi. Comments impacting the character, motivation of council members, staff, community members are out of order, and we discourage that strongly. Distractions take away from the speaker, audience, and council members are all asked to help counselors focus on the speaker, because you're the one we want to listen to, and by helping all of us, then remain respectfully quiet. So that is just the review. Those are posted at the back of the room as well. Before we go to spoken comment, I would like to acknowledge for the record a letter of written comment, and that is from Nancy Livermore, resident of Kaiser, and concerned with inadequate parking. And I did have a brief conversation with the city manager regarding this. Let me see if I can find the comment, that the issues around parking in our neighborhoods continues to be, and this is something she talked about, people parking on the, in the public spaces, and that we need to have some communication materials readily available to share with people who are wondering about, concerned about, or upset about parking in the public streets and the rules about that. So see about following up something, a simple one pager that can be easily shared by those of us who are not law enforcement or planners, that we can share with community members to help build understanding on how this works in Kaiser. So that'll be the follow-up there. I do have a number of people signed up, so I am just going to, with not in any particular order, and I'll start with Mr. Michael Walsh, Welsh. And on deck is Tammy Cunz.
All right, good evening, Mayor Clark, councilors and city staff. This can be a little bit different, starting, I'll be pleasant for once. I want to sincerely congratulate the city staff on getting the Sharp Alliance certification. I'm an occupational safety and health officer by training. I'm on the Sharp Alliance Board of Directors, so congratulations on that. You guys are welcome to the Sharp Alliance free of charge for the next remainder of the calendar year, so take advantage of that. We hold meetings monthly, regularly. We have seven regions within that Sharp Alliance that represent various counties throughout Oregon. Kaiser sits in region two. We are looking for a member to sit on the board for that region, so if anybody within the city staff is interested, hit us up, we would be willing to have someone sit with us. So shifting gears though, in the same spirit of collaboration and listening, I hope this council will also reflect on the choices made regarding the Community Diversity Engagement Committee. While I appreciate when this council works productively with the community, it's difficult to ignore the distinct contrast being recognized for workplace safety while also undermining those who have laid the groundwork for equity and inclusion that includes safety in civic spaces, safety to speak, to challenge, and to be heard without the fear of being silenced or replaced. I do find it unsettling that some of the members were replaced, especially when this council had expressed concerns that there was a need for tangible tasks and measurable goals, as well as a way to show progress towards achieving those goals. By swapping members out, it's only going to set it back a little bit. I don't think it's productive, shouldn't have happened. I'm sorry. They were doing good work, and I feel like getting rid of all of them but one was the wrong thing to do. And I know that's your prerogative, your choice to assign the members that you choose. I look forward to seeing what the CDC does going forward, but I will be attending their meetings and holding them to some sort of accountability, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. Tammy Cunz, and next up on deck will be Ryan Hewlett.
I'm Tammy Cunz, Kaiser resident. First, I want to say thank you, Shaney, for appointing me two years ago. It's been an honor to serve the city of Kaiser as a whole. I'm speaking to you this evening to share my sadness that our city council has not reached out to any of the people on the committee to let us know what was going on. As people who lead Kaiser and make choices for Kaiser, it's part of your responsibility to let us know what you've chosen, to have who have, who you have chosen and when you have decided to replace us, reappointments, and make decisions that affect what we do for Kaiser. Appointments to the committee will be asked to think broadly in terms of how issues of racism, sexism, ableism, and other discriminatory and other issues impact the city residents of Kaiser. This also means that we work really hard to remove barriers as we identify them. This is one of the reasons why we have material in other languages, which have helped guide our framework and guide the city of Kaiser. We've also been given more tasks to complete and are doing very good at knocking them out one by one. A diversity committee is a task force or goal of staff members to initiate necessity, cultural, and ethical changes for the welfare of the organization and employees, gender, edithis, edithis, yeah, whatever that word is, I can't pronounce it at the moment, age, physical abilities, and much more as we engage with our schools, businesses, and places for Kaiser. For sharing what we learned to do in the group helps meet the needs of the community. This is just a small snapshot of some of the things that we do. A diverse team brings together individuals with different backgrounds, experiences, and viewpoints. This can be, include variation of age, ability, nationality, ethnicities, religious backgrounds, personal history, professional experience, gender, skills, identity, and cultural preferences. This is what we have done for the last two years. I know because I'm part of that team, and when one of our team members needs support, I know that I can call upon them to gain support for whatever it is we're facing. Changing the committee so often does not allow people to learn what we do, how to engage, and it changes the family dynamic that serve Kaiser. We should be allowed to serve as independent people that represent the people we serve Kaiser, with the guidance from those who've asked us to sit on the committee. I can tell you that when I've reached out to Shaney, she has made time to talk to me at every turn and has helped guide how I serve Kaiser as a whole, and I wish this process had gone much And I wish this process had gone much smoother.
Ryan Hewlett. Yeah, you're still here. And on deck is, oh, Nancy Livermore. You are here. I'm sorry, I read your letter.
Hello. For the record, I'm Ryan Hewlett, City of Kaiser. I was at the meeting a couple weeks ago to talk about the diversity committee and keeping the word diversity. I want to first off and just say thank you for keeping the word. That is a huge plus and a great decision that you guys have all made. However, I do echo everything that Michael and Tammy have just said in regards to reappointing everybody except for Jane. Michael said it would set it back a little bit. I had raised that and say it's going to set it back a lot more than that. But, you know, what's done is done at this point, right? So something else I had to talk about, since I was planning to talk about just urging you guys not to replace people. I'm going to say, talk about like youth membership and the voting power that you guys voted to allow a youth liaison to have voting power. I think that's great. I think that was a great decision you guys did and a huge step forward. But I was disappointed to hear that a comment was that they didn't want to set this as a precedent. And my first question is, why? If there are young people in this city who are engaged and present and willing to serve, they absolutely deserve a voice at the table. Their perspectives are too often unheard, yet they are directly affected by the decisions that you guys make. Empowering youth isn't just the right thing to do, but it's how you build the future generation that cares about local government, that feels seen, and that learns to lead. I mean no disrespect, but if you look around the room, the average age of people attending these meetings are a lot higher. And if we want a truly representative local government, we need to make sure younger voices feel welcome and valued and heard. Encouraging their involvement now builds stronger future for Kaiser. I think I said that wrong, but regardless, I think the point was across or given across, whatever. At the end of the day, it was said, like said, to not set a precedent. I think this should absolutely be a precedent as it's a good one. And yeah, that's what I got to say today. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Nancy. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you for having me. I would like to address the growing in-and-out-of-hood parking situations in so many of the neighborhoods in Kaiser, namely dead-end streets with flag lots on them, big apartment buildings, homes jammed so close together that they are almost like attached apartments. With all the building of apartments and/or houses in Kaiser in the tiniest of spaces, I guarantee that those plans did not have adequate parking space planned in them. There may be two-car garages available with homes or designated parking areas for the apartments, but the excess cars are being pushed onto the street in front of homes that belong to homeowners. There are many nice streets and areas where cars don't overwhelm neighborhoods. But for those of us who live on dead-end streets with flag lots, it's a nightmare. I live on a dead-end street with a flag lot to the east. On that flag lot sits two two-story homes and a third two-story home on the corner of the flag lot facing the dead-end street. It's a group home. We, as owners of homes on that dead-end street, have tolerated numbers of cars that come and go constantly, loud music, racing cars. We have called KPD numerous times and have been told that there's not much they can do because it's a public street. The drivers have been asked to slow down because of children in the neighborhood, most of the time unheated. It's an accident waiting to happen. On Sunday, March 30th, I counted nine extra cars on the street in front of my house. That's six more than what fits in the driveway of that home on the corner. It's in addition to the homeowners' cars normally on the street. There is usually that at least one car, one pickup, or van parked on the flag lot. That should be a violation since it partially blocks the entrance to and from the flag lot houses. The neighborhood homeowners have tried to accommodate the extra parking by having a section of the parking available along a fence with, not near a home, for about, and it's about 20 feet further up on St. Charles instead of in front of homes. It's seldom used. They don't want to be that far away. Many, many times, I have seen vendors who come to help homeowners turn around and leave because there is no parking available. Why should people who hire, why should the people we hired to help us have to park a block away just because of a very poor parking situation? I also have witnessed many times fire trucks, ambulances, and recycling trucks go to the barricade and have to back down the street in the first place because there's no place to turn around. Most of the time, the street sweeper truck has very little access to any curb cleaning because of all the extra parked cars. The mail people have told me they don't like to come down and deliver mail down that street because there's no place for them to turn around. I realize that as many situations are, this is more than a one, more than one side problem with no real answer except making sure that new buildings have adequate parking available. The state of Oregon should have never allowed that home to be put on a dead-end street. The city of Kaiser should have been more diligent 25 years ago when the cherry orchard was developed for the homes. I was the very first home out there, so I know that I've just watched this go for 25 years. Be that as may, be that as it may, a situation has been created that is not good for anyone. All of the above things, all of the above brings us to the present situation with the building, proposed building happening in my area. One lot on Clear Lake on the verge of a new building will hold several three-story homes with 18-foot frontage and only eight feet apart. They've changed that from 10 feet to eight feet just to accommodate the proposed homes. It's happening over and over again. What about parking? I ask you to stop thinking about how many tax dollars you're going to receive from the many proposed homes and think about the citizens having to put up with the cars and the traffic. The lack of forethought is making a bad situation even worse. Please take time to think before you prove yet another area to be developed about the parking. People and livability first, not money. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I appreciate you coming in, also reading your letter. This is the one I was referring to earlier. And I wish I could tell you it was going to get better.
It's not.
But it's not. We are up against state regulations that have taken away a lot of our control around parking. And I'm looking at Mr. Witham, if I may. We have this little thing called the Climate Friendly Equitable Communities. It's called CFEC. And it is putting requirements on how we do planning in our cities that we are working really hard to do the best we can against that. We went always to Supreme Court and lost. Mr. Witham, do you want to talk a little bit about CFEC? I probably don't want to, but...
Parking is my favorite thing to talk about.
I know.
Nancy, first I'll just say thank you for coming down. Thank you for participating. I'd gotten a copy of your letter. I think you actually talked to some folks in my office because code enforcement officers...
I've talked to a lot of people.
Yes, yes. No, and I know, you know, I know you have a certain situation in your neighborhood. I live right around the corner from you guys, so like I happen to walk around after I got your info. And I know it probably varies day to day. At the end of the day, the state did pass some legislation a few years ago. They've actually mandated what a local government, especially a city of our size, what we can require. And the maximum parking we can require of folks is one onsite space per dwelling unit. So that's what we do. I mean, we've not gone below what we can do. We used to require a little more when your neighborhood was built. Probably would have been like...
25 years ago.
I was going to say early 2000s, right? Because I think where I live was a little bit earlier than your neighborhood. Yeah, so I mean, back then, you know, that was like two spaces for every house on the access easements and the flags that have to provide three onsite spaces, which, again, you live in a neighborhood with big houses. I used to own one of those houses in another neighborhood, and I had at one point like five cars because I had three teenagers. They've gone off to college, so we're not the problem in the neighborhood anymore. But, you know, for what I can say is we do regulate it to what we can regulate it to. Unfortunately, that specific ability has kind of been taken away by the Oregon administrative rules. And Mayor Clark is correct in that it actually is going to be getting worse as far as what we can, what we can require. The one thing, and I try to be positive, but the one thing I will say is that we've yet to see developers come in and build developments with no parking. And right now, the vast majority of Kaiser could be developed with zero parking requirements because there's a transit line that runs down River Road. So that was a change that's been in effect for like the last two and a half years. And we still see people building to what the market supports. But as I said, we do have some, there are some tools. There are some requirements, but generally, it's about neighbors being good neighbors, too. So anyway, for what it's worth.
I think the good neighbors is the key. But when you get people who don't like to be good neighbors, they ruin it for everybody. There was about, oh, it's been within the past six months, a Sunday morning, walking down St. Charles Street, there were 60 cars between in the driveway and parked on the street. That's one heck of a lot of cars. I mean, that's not uncommon.
And unless everybody was having a giant Super Bowl party that day, it definitely seems like a lot. So, yeah, I understand.
And then they spend the night, a lot of them, and it just keeps building and building. Thank you for your time. Let me know if there's ever any answers.
Again, thank you. I'm very sympathetic. I've got two in my neighborhood that are going to construction of six units in what used to be a single detached residence. So I understand. Yeah, we'll keep on working on our neighborliness as well. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Francisco Saldivar. And then Levy Herrera.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and city counselors. My name is Francisco Saldivar. I live on Newburgh here in Kaiser. And I want to take a few minutes to discuss a bond measure from Schmeckata Community College that you will see in your mail ballot here in the coming weeks for, I believe it's May 20th. So this is what we would call, or Schmeckata calls it a career and technical education bond. It was originally passed by the voters in our service area in 2008. We are in, the bond is close to its sunset, which is in next year. I believe June or so of next year will sunset. We would like, and we're asking the voters, to extend the existing mill levy and the existing bond from 2008 with no changes, which is 27 cents per thousand. It's, in November, when we calculated out, it's like $61 is what the cost of the bond is per Kaiser resident on average. So the bond will fund all of, will fund upgrades to many of our career and tech ed programs. So that is criminal justice, emergency management services, signature items that increase our paramedic and EMT programs. We have a longstanding partnership with Kaiser Fire through our regional training facility at Brooks. And so those are the signature things for Kaiser that's going to be, signature item things that are going to be increased. And then I guess the crown jewel for the bond will be a new trade center that will be built at the Salem campus to help our expanding trade programs. We have 900 apprenticeships students at Schmeckata Community College, and we're adding more apprenticeships. We're adding two more in the fall among, with our other trade apprenticeships. And so we need some new facilities to help expand those new programs. So like I said, I want to stress that this is a renewal bond. It is not going to increase taxes beyond what they were last year, the year before that. And it's a 27-cent mill levy. And this is a capital project bond, so there's no people being funded by this bond. Every cent of the bond is being put back into the community either at our Brooks campus, or YVC campus, or Salem campus. We have seven satellite campuses, and that money will be used to expand our career and tech ed programs amongst all of our campuses that we have in our service area. And like I said, for Kaiser, it's really going to help our EMS, public safety, criminal justice programs, and that's something that directly impacts the city for the better. So, questions?
Thank you. I'll just step in for a moment. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Saldivar?
All right. Thank you very much for your time.
Oh, I have one question. If anybody wants any information, where do they go to find that?
So if you go in Google and type YESFOR Schmeckata, so Y-E-S-F-O-R Schmeckata in Google, you'll come up with our PAC website, and that will have all information on there. We have an extensive list of endorsements from the community. And I have the opportunity for you, if you want to put a sign up in your yard or if you'd like to, you know, provide other support, that's available. But any information for the bond and what it's going to serve and what it's going to do is YESFOR Schmeckata, and you'll be able to type that in Google and find it. Thanks.
Thank you so much. Are there any other questions? Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Levy Herrera.
Good evening, Major Clark, council members and staff. I'm a resident of Salem, but I'm also executive director of a community nonprofit who serves about 100 families here in Kaiser. I also got my start as a volunteer at Future Business Leaders of America at McNary High School. So I have, so this community is very close to my heart professionally and personally. Before, I want to speak about the CDEC, but before that, I just want to say, support the idea of street art as a deterrent of graffiti, especially when you do that as murals on walls. That's, and there's another trick to it, which you can reach out to me, and we can talk about that. But that's, murals on walls is a good start. So I just wanted to, to thank you for the conversations you've been having on CDEC or this community. I am really confused a lot by a lot of the process that's happened. It's, it feels like removing almost all members who were without offering an explanation feels a little weird. It's your prerogative to not do it, but I think it'll be great for transparency to talk about like, what is it that this previous committee fell you on? And what are this new folk, most of whom are not here tonight, going to do differently? How are they going to be better than the previous committee? Because I think this, it leaves a lot of room for interpretation of why, and it doesn't tell, I think it gives a little, a really bad start to the new members. Plus, the new structure, and correct me if I'm wrong, if I, if I am not understanding, but the membership of people on this committee now is attached to each individual counselor. So I'm not sure what are, if there are any safe, safe guards that will prevent, you know, if a committee member has a different opinion on a topic than a council member, is there anything in the guidelines that say that that committee member cannot be removed immediately at the whim of a counselor? Is there anything like that, that this could be an unintended consequence? I hope it would be an unintended consequence. So it just feels like... So it just feels like it's taking a lot of independence and, and important work that was starting to happen. I'm also especially bothered by the fact that one, I don't, I don't know any, everybody personally, but at least the one Latina who's on the previous CDEC roster has not been reappointed. And that is, I'll tell you, again, confusing, concerning. Like, why did that happen? Which I, I'm, I don't want to put anybody on the spot, but I'm sure you know who I'm talking about. And it's, it's rather, like I said, it's confusing. So all of this is, I've been doing, I said, I've been volunteering since I was in high school, and I've never seen a setup where council members directly appoint someone who's a representative to a committee and whose term is tied to them, to their own term. This is very unique. Perhaps you want to be unique. That's great. But there are a lot of unintended consequences that can happen here. And how do you ensure that, again, well, let me say it a different way. You're going to own everything that these new committee members say and do. And I trust that you've done a lot of good work in, in screening them and making sure they understand how they're going to represent you. Because that's really, they're not representing the city of Kaiser. They're not representing the community of Kaiser. They're representing individual councillors. And again, if I'm misunderstanding, that could be corrected in the 15 seconds that I have left.
Thank you very much for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Carrie Brown. I'm a longtime resident of Kaiser, and I am currently a member of the CDEC committee, at least until April 21. I have some thoughts that I would like to share with you. And I wrote these earlier today, and I have had to make, you know, a few grammatical changes based on what's happened tonight. So I'll start with, you know, some of my thoughts. I would like to share my thoughts about how the members of the CDEC committee are selected. Originally, when the CDEC was created, interested individuals submitted a letter of interest that included their experience and why they wanted to be on the committee. Since then, individual councillors selected members to the committee without any apparent requirements. A few councillors had difficulty even getting people to be members of the CDEC committee. Last year, the members of the CDEC created a document with recommendations on how members should be selected. It was brought up to the volunteer coordinating committee, but at that time, the VCC did not want to be involved. So the city council decided to continue with how they selected committee members. I see today that the Kaiser community, Kaiser City Council, has decided to implement some changes that will affect the CDEC membership. I am very disappointed. Can I repeat that again? I am very, very, very disappointed. So far, every member of the committee has been replaced except me, and I'm waiting for that decision April 21. And Jane has been reappointed. Again, she had only been on this committee for a couple of months. And since that time, we had worked so hard, so, so hard. We had goals, we had tasks, we each had made decisions on how to engage with neighborhood committees. We each had tasked ourselves to engage with city committees. We had started to make engagement with the community. All of that work is going to go down the drain. These statements, I were not in my written statement. I'm just going off my written statement. Because all of a sudden, I'm just so upset. Anyway, to continue, I have always advocated for transparency and would like to reconsider that the VCC select members for approval by the Kaiser City Council. Openings should be advertised on the city of Kaiser website and the Kaiser Times. All other city committee members are interviewed and selected by the volunteer coordinating committee. The CDEC is the only committee not following this process. I had volunteered to prepare a document that I was going to share with CDEC members and members of the VCC for input in May. All of that work is now paused or disappeared. I wanted the process to be less cumbersome and neutralize any possible bias or prejudice. In addition, the current members of the CDEC committee have been committed to our mission that we worked on very hard. Shane was on that committee when we developed the mission. You remember that. We developed goals. Our committee got along and respected each other. By the way, all of us here are professionals in one way or another. In any successful organization, there is a need for experienced members and new members. If you replace the entire committee with new members, where's the history? Where's the experience? How are they going to start the work that we have put so much effort and passion into it? Sorry. Anyway, so replacing us is going to be detrimental. Any questions? I'm sorry I get so emotional.
Question for...
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Microphone, microphone. The volunteer coordinating committee is the one that up until now has been the one appointed by city councillors. And so now the community diversity engagement committee is done the same way as the volunteer coordinating committee, the only two in the city that are done that way. The rest all go through VCC. So, is that the correction one on the record? Okay, thank you very much. Anything else? All right. Thank you. It's the top of the hour. That is everybody I signed up for public comment. We are going to go to our public hearings.
I apologize. Something triggered my allergies. So I don't, I don't think you're the only one, Councilor Kohler. We're going to go to item 7A, which is resolution authorization for supplemental budget, general fund, transient occupancy tax. Mr. Wood?
Madam Mayor, City Council?
You won't? Yeah, of course.
Tonight, I have four supplemental budgets for you. These are primarily just cleanup as we get towards the end of the year. So unfortunately, we have to go through each one individually. I can't basket them all together, otherwise I would have done that for you.
Oh, I've got, hang on. Public hearing is now open. There we go.
The first budget adjustment is to transfer $40,000 from contingency to materials and services in the general fund transient occupancy tax. This is to provide appropriations for the Kaiser Chamber Commerce budgetary allocation that was approved at the March 17, 2025 meeting. And with that, I'd be free to take any questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions on the staff report or this resolution? Counselor Christopher?
Thank you. Tim, is this the only one that deals with transient occupancy taxes? Are the other supplemental budgets general fund?
This is the only general fund, yes.
What?
You are correct. This is the only general, the only supplemental budget that impacts the general fund.
But it's, oh, the others are protected funds. Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Seeing none. I do not have, actually, I have one person signed up, but it might be, anyway, Latonya Gibbs did sign this sheet, and I don't think she's still here. And I think she might have intended to sign up for, unless I don't see her. I don't see her. Is there anybody who would like to address the council under this public hearing? Counsel, is there any additional information that you need prior to my closing the public hearing? Public hearing is now closed. Council President Starr, would you please put a motion on the table?
I move that Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R2025, Authorization for Supplemental Budget, General Fund, Transient Occupancy Tax.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R2025, dag gummit, Authorization for Supplemental Budget, General Fund, Transient Occupancy Tax. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, signify by saying no. Hearing no objection. Motion passes unanimously with, right now, we have showed two absent. That would be Cross and Parsons that stepped away briefly. We could, under, let her come back, reopen this, and let her vote if we so choose. We are now going to go on to item 7B, which is resolution authorization for supplemental budget, street fund. Mr. Wood?
Madam Mayor, City Council, as required by our financial policies, if we try to spend any of the unanticipated expenses within our capital outlay line, we need to get city council approval. And this is to get that approval for a previous project that's already been approved. And so this is to transfer $109,100 in appropriations within the street fund capital outlay area from unanticipated expenses to street resurfacing. And this is to provide for the manhole repair project. And with that, I'd be free to address any questions.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions on the, the resolution or the report regarding the supplemental budget, general fund, street fund? I do not have anybody signed up under this public hearing. Did I open the public hearing, Ms. Bissett? I did. Public hearing is now open, and the staff report is included by reference. Sorry. Is there anyone here who would like to address the council on this matter? I have nobody signed up. Okay. Counsel, do you need any additional information prior to closing the public hearing? Seeing none. Public hearing is now closed. Council President Starr?
I move that Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R2025, Authorization for Supplemental Budget, Street Fund.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R2025, Authorization for Supplemental Budget, Street Fund. Anything further for discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, signify by saying no. Hearing no objection. Motion passes unanimously with one absent, that's Counselor Cross. That takes us to item 7C, Resolution Authorization for Supplemental Budget, Administrative Services Fund. Public hearing is now opened. And this goes to Mr. Wood.
Madam Mayor, City Council, this is just to reallocate existing appropriations within the Administrative Services Fund. Back in 2024, we adopted a few studies. I had the majority of the funds available in the HR budget at that point, and I did not reallocate them at that time. And this is basically to reflect the current allocation of staffing, specifically within city recorder area and the city attorney's office. And with that, I'd be free to address any questions.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions on the staff report or the supplemental budget itself? Council President Starr?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Wood, this will be allocated, I don't want to say correctly because it wasn't wrong to begin with, but I don't know. How, what's the word, what's the verbiage I'm looking for? You'll do the same allocation in the new budget. You won't, um, you know what I'm saying.
That is correct. This is, this is to reflect the, the existing composition of, of staff that we have. So this will roll into the next year's budget. You are correct.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Is there anyone who would like to address the council on this matter? I have nobody signed up. Seeing none. Counsel, do you require any additional information prior to closing the public hearing? Seeing none. Public hearing is now closed. Council President Starr?
I move that Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R2025, Authorization for Supplemental Budget, Administrative Services Fund.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R2025, Authorization for Supplemental Budget, Administrative Services Fund. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, signify by saying no. Hearing no objection. Motion passes unanimously with one absent, that's Counselor Cross. That takes us to item 7D, Resolution Authorization for Supplemental Budget, Kaiser Station Local Improvement District Fund. Public hearing is now open. Mr. Wood?
Madam Mayor, City Council, this is an oops on my part. I apologize. It's a very small dollar amount that we're dealing with. Unfortunately, if we're over budget, we have bad repercussions from the state. So I'm doing this to get our books cleaned up. I misallocated our interest expense for the Kaiser Station LID. This is to recognize an additional $2,000, an additional working capital, and then the corresponding interest. So this is truly a cleanup. Sorry.
The rules are the rules, right?
The rules are the rules.
Yep. Any questions on the supplemental budget or the report? Counselor Kohler?
Just a quick comment. $2,000 out of 1.0, almost 1.6 million isn't too bad things.
I appreciate your grace. Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone here who would like to address the council on this matter? I have nobody signed up. Okay. Anything further for counsel prior to closing the public hearing? Seeing none. Public hearing is now closed. Council President Starr?
I move that Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R2025, Authorization for Supplemental Budget, Kaiser Station Local Improvement District Fund.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R2025, Authorization for Supplemental Budget, Kaiser Station Local Improvement District Fund. Any discussion? All in favors, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, signify by saying no. Hearing no objection. Motion passes unanimously. One absent, Counselor Cross. Item 7E is OLCC application, new license application, Mesa de Rincon Serviceria and Tap Room LLC. Ms. Bissett?
Mayor and City Councilors, the city received a license application for a full on-premises commercial liquor license for Mesa de Rincon Serviceria y Tap Room located at 5137 River Road North. As required by Kaiser Code, Chapter 4, a public hearing was scheduled. Notice was published and mailed to all property owners within 200 feet of the establishment, as well as the Northwest Kaiser Neighborhood Association. The police department conducted a background check of the applicant and has no reason to recommend denial of the application. The planning department finds the location of the establishment to be properly zoned and has no additional comment on the application. Staff recommends approval of the recommendation to the OLCC for this license.
All right. Thank you very much. Did I open the hearing?
Yes.
I did. Okay.
I think.
Did I? No.
Yeah.
Public hearing is now open. The staff report is included by reference. Any additional info, or any questions from the city council on the resolution? Counselor Duran?
So is this, they're changing their liquor license? Because, because they did one last year.
That is correct.
And then we approved it again in January. So this is an update to the license?
It's a new one, a new application, yeah, for a new license. They're going to a commercial liquor license.
So instead...
For a full on-premises.
Okay, so they're going to sell everything instead of just...
The owner's here this evening, if you'd like.
Come on down.
Yeah, if you would. Yeah, we are, we're lucky. We have the owner here. Come on down.
Good evening, everyone.
Hi. Good to see you.
My name is Moises Mendoza. A year ago, I was actually here.
My name is Moises Mendoza, a year ago, I was actually here, applying for the, our limited license. The city of Kaiser has treated us really well, and we are very happy to announce that we are transitioning, we meet other requirements to get a full liquor license now to offer signature cocktails on top of our craft beers. So we meet the food requirement necessary, so we are just upgrading, thankfully. So I'm very happy that a year later, we get an opportunity to be here again with all of you.
Congratulations, that's great. Any other questions? Yeah, okay, you answered the question.
Okay, thank you again.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council under this public hearing? Counselors, do you need any additional information prior to closing the public hearing? Public hearing is now closed, Council President Starr.
I move that Kaiser City Council recommend approval of the application for a new license application for a full on-premises commercial liquor license for Mesa del Rincon Serviceria and Tap Room LLC, under the guidelines established by ORS 471.175 and the ordinances of the city of Kaiser.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council recommend approval of the application for a new license application for a full on-premises commercial liquor license for Mesa del Rincon Serviceria y Tap Room LLC, under the guidelines as established by ORS 471.175 and the ordinances of the city of Kaiser. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying no. Hearing no objection, motion passes unanimously, one absent, Counselor Cross. And the final public hearing for this evening, Item 7F, Resolution authorizing the city manager to transfer property to a city of Salem Marion County Tax Lot 073W01B003400. Public hearing is now open, Mr. Brown.
Mr. Lindsay has this item, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Lindsay.
Thank you, Mayor and counsel, this is a situation where this is a 30 by 50 piece of property that is located actually on the Salem side of our parkway, and it houses Salem facilities for sewer. And so, the, Mr. Lawyer brought this to the city's attention, and if we're to do what Salem wants, which is to give them this little patch of 30 by 50 that has their sewer on it, we had to properly notice it, so we did that in the paper. And then, we have to have some evidence of value. The county assessors puts it at $1,500, I guess it's a dollar a foot, because it has a little sewer station on it. And it's pretty much surrounded in the industrial area by another property. And so, the city really doesn't have any use for it whatsoever, but the city of Salem certainly does. And so, they wanted to be able to have access and rights, because if, and when, and potentially, their neighboring property has some issues with them, they want to be able to address it as a property owner, so that's another reason why they want it. But, in order to, for us to transfer property, we have to go through this regime rule, so we're asking that you find that this is in our, in our interests and that we don't need this property and that we can transfer it over to the city of Salem.
This was an oddball.
Yeah.
Do we have any more hidden property?
Well, so...
Secret property, I don't know.
Mr. Lawyer thinks that they gave us this, and I don't know if you want to speak to this, but the, basically, when, when we got incorporated, the county started giving some to Salem and some to us. And so, this was one that, because it's along our road, and isn't, is it on Shemaw itself?
If I may, let me give you the background. I was at a meeting with Salem staff regarding providing them water this winter, okay? Because of the Detroit drawdown, you're all aware of that, which is now not happening.
Yes.
And when that meeting ended, one of their staff members asked me if I knew anything about this piece of property, and my answer was no, what about it? Well, as Mr. Lindsay said, it's a 30 by 50 piece of property in the city of Salem that was, that has a sewer lift station on it, okay? Salem owns the lift station, maintains it, and has some issues with the lift station. And the bordering property owner has built fences across this piece of property, this small piece of property. Well, Salem only can't do anything about it, because they're not the property owner. Well, they really need to do something about it, so they can maintain their sewer lift station, okay? So, that's the need for the, really the need to get it transferred. How it became ours originally, the story I was told by former attorney Johnson, Shannon, and his assistant Tammy, was after we incorporated, the county owned a bunch of property in Kaiser that should be Kaiser's, like parks for one, things called spite strips, reserve strips at the end of a public street. I'm going to say 100 of them, I don't know that, if that's a solid number or not, but a fair number of little pieces of property throughout, they're, it's the Kaiser city limits. Well, and they did it in bunches. Well, this piece of property was deeded to the city of Kaiser in a bunch with a lot of other ones, and nobody ever caught it, until about three weeks ago. So, there's the backstory to this one.
There you have the rest of the story. Okay, any questions on, on the very odd story in the staff report? Is there anyone here who would like to address the council under this public hearing? We have nobody signed up, but do now have, you all now have a tale to tell. All right, I don't have anybody signed up, nobody is wanting to testify. Counsel, do you need any additional information prior to closing the public hearing? The public hearing is now closed, Council President Starr.
I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R 2025, authorizing the city manager to transfer property to the city of Salem Marion County Tax Lot 073W01B003400.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R 2025, authorizing the city manager to transfer property to a city of Salem Marion County Tax Lot 03073W01B003400. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, signify by saying no. Hearing no objection, motion passes unanimously with one absent, Counselor Cross. Let's give it back. All right, that will conclude then our public hearings for this evening. We have already handled Item 8A. We will now move to Item 8B, which is the resolution adoption of the 2025-2026 City Council Goals, Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and counsel, on February 24th, the City Council met in a retreat to set the goals for the next two years of this cohort's term. And it's been on the agenda for the last couple meetings, but it's been pushed back, so this is purely a formality of approving the goals that you so dutifully worked on.
All right, thank you very much, any questions or comments at this point on the council goals? Okay, Council President Starr, would you like to put a motion on the table?
I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R 2025, adoption of the 2025-2026 City Council Goals.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R 2025, adoption of 2025-2026 City Council Goals. Any discussion, Counselor Christopher?
Just a question, so how will you, how will we be assigning leads on individual goals, as they were last time?
These are all, as I understand, staff-driven. I don't know that any of these were designed to be a work plan items, because last time we also had work plan items where there was a council, council leads involved.
Okay, so I have a, I have a supplemental motion to make, when you want me to make it.
Now is the time, if you want to, I'll move to amend.
No, I don't want to move to amend. Well, let's vote on him, and then I'll make a motion. Let's approve them.
Did you want, any further discussion on the motion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, signify by saying no. Hearing no objection, motion passes unanimously with one absent, Counselor Cross.
Okay, here's my motion.
Counselor Christopher?
Thank you, so I, I would like to make a motion that we have a council task force work on the next draft of the strategic plan. And in my motion, I would like it to be Council President Starr, myself, and Counselor Duran, working with Adam Brown, to put together where we are so far, along with Mo Avisham, he is giving some guidance as well, but he wouldn't be part of the task force, to bring, for the four of us to work together, to bring then, to City Council work session, the next iteration for council to review and decide how they want to move forward on that, to try to get the strategic plan to a position where we can adopt it. That's my motion, I look for a second.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council create a work group, if I may restate, because that's what that is.
Okay.
A work group comprised of Counselor Christopher, Counselor Duran, and Council President Starr, working with the city manager and Mo Avisham, to bring back to the City Council an update on our current status with the five-year strategic plan.
Perfect, Mayor.
Is that an accurate restatement?
Yeah.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah.
Well, I, I could, there's no way, on God's green earth, I was going to be able to recite that one from memory.
Yeah, well, you did great.
All right. Discussion? So my understanding was, was we were going to look at this, short-term goal was to do a work session on where we're at, to bring us all up to where we are, and then decide how we're going to proceed. So this would jump ahead into creating a work group.
Correct.
Okay. I'd rather us all be involved, but I'm just one opinion on this one.
You will be.
So, work group would be working independently, and of course, all of those are public meetings, everybody can attend, they are all noticed, and so forth.
Correct.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, signify by saying no. No. Motion passes with five aye, one no Clark, and one absent, Cross. Okay? And that takes us to 8C, which is the National Observances and Commemorative Heritage Months. Mr. Brown?
Oh, okay.
Who, who got the short straw on this?
I'll take it.
Mr. Lindsay?
Thank you, again, Mayor and counsel. We came on March 3rd with a resolution that recognized the proclamations that were going to be presented at council meetings, and it became evident that we needed two lists. One that was actually going to be presented at meetings, and then one that the City Council would recognize, but that wouldn't necessarily be permitted at, or presented at the meeting, so that we can't, we don't have more than one per meeting presented. So this is the resolution that does that, it creates those two lists, and then it, it lines them out, and of course, always subject to amendment, if the council so desires, would be easy to change, but this is the current iteration of, of what we have and what we've been told to make, the ones for presentation and the ones just for recognition.
Thank you very much, any questions on the, the staff report? Okay, Council President Starr, would you put the motion on the table, so we can deliberate?
I move that Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R 2025, recognizing national observances and commemorative heritage months, and repealing Resolutions R 2021-3215, R 2022-3324, and R 2022-3343.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R 2025, recognizing national observances and commemorative heritage months, repeal of Resolution R 2021-3215, R 2022-3324, and R 2022-3343. Discussion? So I've got, I'm going to state once again my objection to not having the Constitution be recognized in City Council. I think this is a very important one to do in a public setting, and so, based on that, I'm going to be voting no. I don't think we can, especially, there is no time at which the attention to our Constitution should be, should be, should be eliminated. So I will be voting no on that. I have, that is September, Constitution Week, and the beginning of National Hispanic Heritage Month happen at the same time. And, so that is one of my concerns. The one on foster care was one that we were asked to do as a one-off, so this will be for just this year. I don't see it on here, oh, it is going to be not presented here, okay. And Small Business Saturday, I know we talked about doing that at the chamber. Again, this is asked for every single year. So those are two that I think need to be acknowledged on an annual basis, including this year. I know this is only for this year, we'll do another one for next year, but I think those are two very important ones, so I'm a no. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, signify by saying no. No. Motion passes five one, the no being Clark and the absence being Cross. Discussion Item 8D, which is on council rules of procedure. Let me go to that one. Yep, there we go, I'm on the right one. I, I brought this to council a couple of months ago. There it is. And since then, we've had a number of other conversations, but I'm going to pass out something that I've been working on with Ms. Biset relative to this, this agenda item, which actually has something to do with what we just passed, which will make it a lot simpler. Nope, here's the other one. So in your packet, you have some notations that I wanted to bring forward to council after we adopted our changed rules for procedure. And some of them are typographical errors, and they can just be taken care of pretty simply. But there were about four, and now I have another one I'd like to consider as well in updating our rules of procedure. One is on attendance duty, when I was looking back through our charter, there was a Section 3.6 that has a quote "compulsion to attend", which you can do when a quorum is needed. As I read through and realized that we also have the ability to do appearance electronically, this would be an opportunity, it felt to me, to be able to bring our rules of procedure into compliance with the charter by having a method by which we could, quote unquote, compel, or allow for a council member to appear electronically, so we could make quorum, even if, if we lose quorum, or are in danger of losing quorum of those physically present. So my proposal is to allow for electronic, for a council member to appear electronically, if we deem that necessary, or we need to, quote unquote, compel a council member to attend as per Charter Section 3.6. So that'd be the first item I would ask us to consider, so we would have an ability to be able to use electronics to make it easier, should we have the occasion to need someone to appear electronically for quorum. And I'd entertain questions on this first one. Any questions or comments? Mr. Lindsay?
I, I have potential suggested language, if you guys would like to entertain that, too.
Yes, please.
So after, so this is on page five of the rules, it's Section 310, and it's the last paragraph, and it says, "In addition, this provision is waived if two-thirds of the council members present, or present, deem it important that a council member appear electronically", and I would just put a comma and then say, "or need to compel a council member to attend as per Charter Section 3.6."
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. So that's what's on the sheet here as well, Counselor Duran?
Just because it's available as a option...
as a option to do it electronically doesn't mean everybody's going to be at a point where they could be. So that's, we have to make sure that, you know, if I'm hunting, I'm not going to go in, you know, 100 miles to be at a meeting because I won't be able to do it out in the field. So that's, you know, how does that work?
So it's for the purpose of, again, if we know that we can reach somebody, if we're down and we're going to lose quorum, to be able to allow them to call in or be present electronically to maintain quorum. So this is in a, I mean, it's happened once in my career.
I was going to say, when has that ever happened? We'd have to be down four.
It's happened. It has happened. But then I read the charter and realized there was a provision that we'd never had a methodology by which we could even do that. But that's in the charter. So it was using our electronic opportunity, technology to make that available as a tool.
My concern is the word compelled.
That's a charter, charter language. Mr. Lindsay.
Thank you. If you wanted to address this, you could put the word reasonably in front of, or after or. So or reasonably need to compel a council member so that it would be maybe unreasonable if you were out of the area and couldn't.
I like it.
Okay.
Okay, Council President Starr?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is more just a clarification question and understanding. Don't we already have a section in our rules that allows for us to request to attend virtually?
Yeah, this is it.
But I thought it was, we have to get, do you see, there's another spot, though.
Yeah. So you have to get permission, right, to?
Right.
To appear electronically. And this then would also say, hey, it could also be used as a tool, not to just get permission, but to compel somebody like, hey, we need a quorum member. Pick the one that it's the least interruptive, but if there really needed to be a meeting.
So there's two places in our rules that, one where we have to get permission if we want to attend online, and then there's this one that says we can compel, or there can reasonably.
This is that section, and we're adding that extra tool.
Adding the extra tool. Okay, thank you.
And that would be because Mayor Clark wanted, or saw that there was a need for that possibly.
Just want to make sure we're in compliance with the charter, and that was an omission I noted. Counselor Kohler?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is for council only, not committees.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Yeah, this whole Section 3 is council meetings. So it does not apply to committees and commissions. That is correct. The next item is.
Madam Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt again. Just for the purposes of, because sometimes we get caught up. If we agree on that, should we just go ahead and vote yes on that and move our way down so that?
Okay. So intended motion to amend our council rules, Section 3.10, attendance duty. So moved.
So seconded.
Okay, moved and seconded?
So yes.
So yes. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, signify by saying no. Hearing no objection, motion passes unanimously. One absent, Counselor Cross. Thank you very much. Section 4.3 was just a minor typo. So that'll be corrected. And same with Section 7.1. Those are just two typos. I'd like to pass 14.2 because that's actually going to be different. I've just handed that out to you and jump down to Section 18.3. I'm asking us to rewrite the sentence for clarity. Skip the 14 because that was what we just handed out. It's going to be very different, but it's the same idea. If you go down to the next one on that list was Section 18.3 on qualifications, where we have the conversation around a non-resident. The way that it is currently written is, it conflicts with itself. So my recommended editing, and Mrs. Reed would be proud, rewrite it to state, quote, "In addition, the candidate must be a resident or, when allowed, a non-resident who must be a property owner or business owner in the city with no more than one non-resident per city committee, board, or commission except where specified by resolution or ordinance." That would be the rewrite.
And how is it different?
The original reads, "In addition, the candidate must be a resident." Period. Even when allowed, city commissions, boards, and commissions cannot have more than one non-resident. See how that doesn't follow?
Yeah.
So I would ask that we rewrite it for clarity to the proposed change. Anybody, can we put a motion on the table to do that?
So moved.
So seconded.
It's been seconded to clarify Section 18.3 with the language recommended. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, signify by saying no. Hearing no objection. Motion passes unanimously with one absent, that's cross. 18.5 is a typo, just removing the word either because it doesn't follow. Section 20 was on the whole idea about work plan. Some years, we have a work plan where we have projects in our council goals that are led by council. Some years, we don't. So I would like to rewrite this section, changing all of the requiring language to be permissive language. So that I don't, so the mayor doesn't have to do a report on something that didn't happen. So for example, let me go back to.
Are you going to read what it is and what you want it to be?
Yeah. It's going to have to change several. Let me turn to page. Stop it. It is Section 20. So we have, um, okay, so it's already permissive in 20.1A. But then you get further down, and it talks about the, um, where's it say, mayor shall?
That's E.
Thank you. Okay, under E, "Reporting, the city manager shall provide a report of progress of council goals in the first quarter of the second year of the biennium. The council may update and amend the goals and work plan for the remainder of the biennium." Where's the one on the mayor is going to make that report? We'd take it out. Did I miss that? Because if we did, then yahoo, Mountain Dew.
Section E, I'm reading the one that says, this is 20.1E, says, "Reporting, the city manager shall provide a report."
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, so we did take it out for the work plan. May update. Okay, never mind. I stand, I'll stand down on that one. I would like to add two more. And since this is already noticed, can I ask for us to consider a change to Section 9.1C on public comment to change from three, five minutes to three? So we are more consistent with other cities. I've lost this vote many years, and I'm ready to go down again, but I'm going to ask about changing that from five minutes to three. Am I going to finally win that one?
I'm a no.
Okay. There we go. So I would need a motion, anyway, I'd like to suggest having that conversation.
I'd like to make a motion.
Can we discuss it?
Yeah, can we, if we put the motion on the table, then we can discuss it.
I move that we move public comment from five minutes to three minutes for clarity of time.
Looking for a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to change public comment time periods from five minutes to three. Discussion, Counselor Christopher.
I'll be voting, I'll be voting no on this. I think that we don't have enough opportunity to talk with our community members. Individually, we're out in the community, and we talk with them one-on-one. But it takes a lot of confidence and a lot of effort for our citizens to come before us to speak to us. I sure in heck am not going to reduce the period of time that they have to talk with us from three minutes, or excuse me, from five minutes to three minutes. I can't imagine that reducing what the time that we have allotted for our citizens to speak to us by two minutes is going to make any difference on whether or not we are able to complete our agenda. I think that's Mr. Brown's problem. He loads us up with too much on our agendas. But I'm not, I'm not going to vote for that. I want to hear what our folks have to say, and I want them to have the full five minutes.
Thank you. Any other comments? Counselor Kohler, and then, did you have any comment?
Thank, thank you, Madam Mayor. We had several comments today that seemed pretty long because of the way that they were presented. But we've had times that people come in, and they're scared spitless. And if we just limit that to three minutes, we may not be able to hear all the things that they want to tell us. I want to know what our citizens think and be able to communicate with us. As a council, I mean, I hear things. Sometimes people call me, and they say, "I can't believe you guys are doing that." And I say, "Come to council, let's talk about it." Or I guess it with them and say, "The next step would be to bring that to council." So I want to hear what the people want to say.
Good. Council President Starr?
Yeah, I'm going to vote no on that one. I think if people are taking the time to write their comments, to come down here and share those comments, I can't remember who it was that said that they might be scared. It's not necessarily something that they're comfortable with. It's an act of, frankly, courage and, for some, way outside their comfort zone. And I don't think it's right to limit that. And so I'm going to vote no and keep it up to five minutes.
And that will pretty much take care of that. Counselor Duran?
Everybody has the opportunity to send it. Send us an email, send us a letter that states a long-winded version of what they could say in three minutes. And I, you know, I read everything that we get, and I take that into consideration, you know, whether they're here or not. And a lot of times, people can be a little more direct and a little more, you know, in the long-winded version, get their point across a little bit better than they could even get it here, sitting here. So I would just suggest that, you know, if somebody really has a long thought to send us, you know, it in an email, and then if they have three minutes to give us the short version, that's, they should come also if they feel comfortable.
Thank you very much. Anything further? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, signify by saying no.
No.
The nos are Kohler, Starr, Christopher. Motion fails. All right. One more thing I'd like to, and I mentioned it earlier, by inviting our youth counselor to speak under Committee Reports, I would like to change Section 6.1, Item E, Committee Reports. It says, "Scheduled presentations, presentations by city committee members and appointments to city committees." Can we add, "And youth counselor report?"
Sure.
So moved.
So seconded.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to add our youth counselor report to Committee Reports, Item 6.1E. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, signify by saying no. Hearing no objection. Motion passes unanimously. One absent, Counselor Cross. And last, is to move our consent agenda to the top of the order, to near the top of the order. Almost every other committee I'm on, the consent agenda is not last, it's at the top for the reason that if you need to pull something, it then slides into administrative action, which is where it belongs. So. So.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to move it, and I said top of the order. Can we put it after? Yeah, put it after public comment?
Yes.
So it's before, okay.
Yes.
So consent calendar will then move up in the agendas here on out under public, so public comment, consent agenda, public hearings, administrative action, other business. Is that?
That's a good change. Yes.
Everybody like it?
Yeah. Yes.
Okay. So it's been moved and seconded to make that change in our order of business. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, signify by saying no. Hearing no objection. Motion passes unanimously. One absent, Counselor Cross. Thank you all.
Well, now wait, what about 14?
Oh, 14. But wait, yes. And I want to give huge thank you to Ms. Bissett. So we've had a number of conversations about proclamations. What was proposed in here was before we really looked at how to do this simpler. And what we just did was adopted at a year at a time. What you have before you is rewriting Section 14. I know it's hard to read in the track changes version. But what it says is, "Request for proclamation shall be filed with the city recorder through an online request form." Let's see. Period. "Requests, along with recurring list adopted by city council "Requests along with recurring list adopted by city council shall be considered annually in January and placed on a proclamation calendar." Period. Section 14.2, "No more than one proclamation will be read at each council meeting, at each meeting. It will be at the discretion of the council whether a proclamation will be read at a city council meeting or presented or sent separately to the requister. If a proclamation is read at a city council meeting, it is preferred that a representative of the requesting organization be present to receive the proclamation if applicable. Any presentation shall be limited to five minutes." That is the proposed language. Council President Starr?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a couple of questions. So, um, for example, I might be showing my bias here, but I think this could go for any proclamation. If the Foster Care Awareness Month proclamation is not part of the annual, how do they, if they submit this online form, or even the other two that we have to consider yet tonight, the Vietnamese-American Remembrance Day? How do, so they're gonna submit it through the form, but then what if there are people on the agenda that want to consider issuing that proclamation? So maybe, we might want to do the Vietnamese-American Remembrance Day, or maybe we want to do Foster Care Awareness Month. How does that happen if we want to make a one-off change? Or, you know, maybe Fallen Law Enforcement Officer Day?
Thank you. The answer, what that would be is, uh, motion to suspend the rules, take up the matter of issuing a proclamation, because it's different from our normal protocol.
But how are we gonna know if it's on an online form?
Melissa's gonna bring it to us.
No, once a year. It'll be accumulated and brought once a year.
That's, I think that's my concern, is that if somebody has something, they submit it through the online form, because I thought, I, I, I mean, I know we've been talking about this proclamation process, and I know it's clunky as it stands now, however, I don't know that I'm comfortable just saying, "Submit it through a form and we'll consider..."
Once a year.
Maybe, what if they consider it, they send it in on February 2nd, "Sorry, you're not gonna get considered for almost another year."
No, I agree.
I'm not sure, I, I don't know, but I'm, I'm not sure about that one.
How would you suggest bringing it to the...
I don't have an exact answer, but I know I don't like this way. So, I mean, if somebody brings it forward, I, I don't know. I, I'm not sure, I don't have an answer, but I don't want to only consider them once a year, and make somebody wait 11 months if they want something considered.
I'm gonna go Counselor Kohler, and then Counselor Christopher.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. What about a compromise where, when the form is submitted, that a, a copy is, is, uh, distributed to the counselors, and we can look at it, and if we feel that it's one that we need to consider before the January, then we have opportunity to talk about it.
That's it.
So a, a counselor could then bring it forward under other business to suspend the rules to consider doing that proclamation?
Are we gonna get them in real time? Or would we get them once a month at our, or in our council packet? So it would be in our council packet? Or no, it wouldn't be?
It can't be in the council packet.
So how would we know to bring it forward?
Ms. Bisset?
Without violating public meetings law.
Ms. Bisset? Thank you.
At the agenda.
Yeah. Ms. Bisset?
Yes, I could, um, forward you the online form request as soon as I received it, there just couldn't be any discussion amongst the council about what they wanted to do, um...
That's okay.
It would have to be, yeah.
The safe bet is to not opine whether you want it or don't want it, that you just send it to the city recorder and say, "Here is one that showed up." And then that way, it doesn't share with the rest of the group.
Wait, what? Say that again.
So if, if there was a proclamation that came to an individual counselor, then don't, you don't add with, when you send it, that, "I either want this or I don't want this." Because the, the thing that causes deliberation is your opinion or your argumentation. So as long as you just objectively send it to her, she can send it to everybody, but she, she can't be an intermediary and say, "They, they really want this." Does that make sense? Because then it creates a zero meter.
Then how do we get it on the agenda? She'll put it in the packet, and then we'll talk about it.
Then we're back to where we are.
Yeah.
So, I mean, if we want to keep on doing this where we have multiple agenda items, that's fine, uh, but I think the online portal is gonna be a really important tool just to, um, let people go online and make these requests, and all the information would then be, um, easily available for the city recorder's office. Mr. Brown?
Um, I, I think I'd rather defer to, um, Counsel Parshad, that, because her and I talked about something, I saw she had her hands raised, it may be the same thing.
Counselor? And then I'll come to Counselor Christopher.
I have to remember that conversation, right? No, so, well, my, my whole thing was, I was, when I was talking to Adam, was if this form is, is, if this form is filled out and submitted on December, right, we make, okay, these are proclamations for the year, but if we get a one-off, and they submit the form, can we not discuss it at an agenda meeting where there's only three people to get it on the agenda, and then we discuss it to see if that's what we want to do? Can we not do that?
What if four of us wanted it on there, and the three that are in the agenda meeting didn't want it on there? You go, effectively, three people just made a decision on an agenda item that there might have been four people in support of.
So now that gets back to the problem where I think of any individual counselor can bring this up under other business, and that is open for all of us to discuss. So if you know of one that is coming, has come in, you see it, you bring it up under other business, and that is gonna be all seven. Counsel President Starr?
So what if, what would it look like, Ms. Bisset, to add a dropdown menu of counselors? Where whoever submitting it could pick one that received it, and then that counselor brings it forward? What does that look like? I, I don't know. I could get all the...
Well...
Except Mr. Brown.
Is that, because I just heard somebody say, "The counselor could, a counselor could bring it forward."
Of course.
Then the, but that, that's a good point.
Yeah.
They picked the wrong person.
So, and Mayor? So if, um, I will now come, come to you, Counsel Christopher. The idea is to create, first of all, um, e- easy access, because right now, most of them do come through the mayor's, um, email. And, uh, then get, now I just forward them off. Used, uh, used to be that the mayor made the decision whether or not a proclamation was gonna move forward, so that's now council. So by sending it to Ms. Bisset, we now have, or having them make the application online, all the information that would need to go into a proclamation request is now there. The second part is, um, how do we get notification that requests have been made? And I think that by sending us a link to a database with the requests that have come in that we could check, and if you want to bring it forward, you can bring it on, up under other business at the next council meeting, ask for the council to suspend the rules, to take up the matter of issuing that proclamation, we decide as a group, and then it goes forward. But that way, we don't have to deliberate on every single request that comes in. That's what's jamming up the works. Because there are times that my, my email will get multiples of stuff from, everything from alligators to penguins to, you name it.
I like penguins.
I like penguins too, but I don't think we need to pass a proclamation. If you want to, you can bring it up under other business. Counselor Christopher?
The time is 8:55, and so we're not gonna make it through the agenda. I'm wondering if this is something, I, I don't disagree with what you just said, Mayor. I, I'd be just fine with that. But if we can't come to a decision on this, like in the next minute or two, let's end it, let's bring it back in two weeks, and, and that'll give folks a chance to think about it. But, um, there's might be, we need to get through the consent calendar, so, and, yeah.
Okay. So, um, let's table, uh, thank you for the recommendation, let's table the discussion on section 14, uh, let's give it some more thought.
Great.
And bring that back. Uh, we have two proclamation requests, this has been going on for two months, um, for item 8E and 8F. Well, 8E has been, uh, coming back...
We'll see it in two weeks.
No, we need to do it.
This needs to be decided. This, we've put, we've put these people off for over two months.
I'll make them, uh, um, I move to extend the meeting to 9:15.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to extend the meeting, uh, city council meeting to 9:15. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, signify by saying no. Motion passes unanimously, one absent counselor cross. Um, item 8E, consideration of proclamation request for Vietnamese-American Remembrance Day, um, that is in your packet. And this has been on the agenda before. Is there a, um, does anybody wish to put the motion on the table to, uh, make this proclamation request? Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and counsel. So one of the, uh, things, uh, ideas that was discussed is that we have two lists, one that is a formal, and, uh, and then the second would be an informal list that we could add, uh, each year. And so, these are two that could be added to that informal, uh, list, since your calendar for the year has been added out, or, uh, created. Uh, and then, at the beginning of the year, uh, those could be considered for the formal process.
Thank you.
You ready with the motion?
Counsel President Starr?
I have one question before I'm ready to do the motion, but the, this would, if we, if there's a motion on the table to approve these proclamation requests for the informal list, there would still be a proclamation created and it's sent to the person that is requesting it, correct? Can I do them both together? Or would you like them apart?
In this case, for the purposes of, uh, efficiency, probably trumps, um, unless somebody wanted to really be no against one and against the other, because really, it's gonna be the same vote. I assume it'll be the same vote.
Okay. So I move to approve the, uh, proclamation request for the informal list for, uh, Vietnamese-American Remembrance Day and Frontline Worker Appreciation Month.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for the city council to, um, issue proclamation requests for the Vietnamese-American Remembrance Day and the, um, Frontline Worker Appreciation Month on the quote-unquote informal list for 2025. Further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, signify by saying no. Motion passes unanimously. Goodie more work. Alright, um, item G is, um, approval of February 10, 2025 work session minutes, this was pulled by my request. Uh, my request is that on page 229 of our council packet, um, page 3 of the minutes, I request that we, let me get to that page, 229. Okay, there it is. Um, under the work session, um, with CDEC, the paragraph beginning, uh, Jewish American Heritage Month, and references made to Rabbi, I would ask that we insert the name of Rabbi Perlstein, because that was the Rabbi to whom I was referring, and there are more that, there's multiple Rabbis in the Salem Kaiser area, and it would feel respectful to be specific. So that would be a request for clarification that I would ask. On that one, and...
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, where are you?
Page, I'm on page 229 of our packet. It is page 3 of the February 10 work session minutes.
Oh, there we go.
Mid, uh, mid-page. So that would be a, a permission to do clarification. And the other clarification I would ask for is, then two paragraphs down from that, under September 15th, um, uh, there was discussion about the timing of Constitution Week proclamation, and it was agreed, I would like to add, by a majority, since it was not by consensus, to add it, um, it was not unanimous, to add it to September 15th. So I would ask for that change to be made. So those are the two changes to that page 3, there's one more change, and that's on page 4, and that has to do with Ruby Bridges Walk to School Day, and said it would have to collaborate the recognition with the Salem Kaiser School District, it would have to be in recog, in collaboration with the Salem Kaiser Safe Routes to School. That's the one requesting it, so that would have to be a correction. Those are the three, uh, changes I would like to ask for these minutes. Counsel President Starr?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There was also, if I recall correctly, that, um, in this, uh, work session, there was a request to consider asking, um, Rabbi Herb, um, as well.
That I remember being part of, um, public comment, uh, reminding us that there are about Rabbi Herb, um, and that we would, um, because the, uh, the one, the Rabbi I was referring to when we were discussing this one is the, is Rabbi Perlstein. Yes, um, and I did ask for the person speaking, which was Levi Herrera, uh, to send me the contact information for our Rabbi, um, Herb, and, um, I have emailed him and had not heard back, but that's separate and apart, um, this is the Rabbi to whom I was referring at that point. So, um, rather than say "the Rabbi," like there's only one, um, I was, uh, very, being very specific. So those are the three, uh, changes I'm asking for in, um, to adopt the...
February 10.
February 10th minutes, with these, work session minutes with these corrections. I would look for a motion to, to do so.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to, um, approve the February 10, 2025 work sessions with the three, uh, changes as noted. Ms. Bisset, were we clear enough for the minutes?
Yes, Mayor, thank you.
Alright, thank you very much. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, signify by saying no. Hearing no objection, motion passes unanimously with one, um, absent, counselor cross. February 18th, I also asked for these to be pulled for, whoa, two, two small changes. Uh, one is on page 239 of our packet, is page 7 of the minutes. There's a reference to the Oregon Library Association Guidelines. In that, the context of that conversation, we were talking about the Oregon State Library requirements, because the OLA are guidelines, not requirements. So I would ask for that clarification. And that was, where was that, on the page? Oh, and the third paragraph down, Ms. Toy explained that nothing was required by the OLA, and this is, that's where it needs to be, the, um, Oregon State Library. So that, so, does that change make sense to everybody? The other is, uh, on page, uh, 240, uh, page 8 of the minutes. The vote on the amendment to the motion is included, but the final vote on the main motion was omitted. It's the same, had the same result, but it, that motion, the final motion got omitted from the, um, from the minutes. So, uh, I would ask that that be added in.
No, what?
Go to the next page.
I'm, I'm there.
Okay. So it says that you move, that Counsel President Starr moved to amend the motion, to amend the language, um, on using discretionary funds, dah dah dah. And then there was a final motion, because that was the motion to amend, but then there was, the final motion was before the amended motion, because there were two votes.
Oh, I see it up there.
I see it, but I'm not re, I'm not willing to approve that until I see an updated draft of the minutes. Clarifying that vote.
Okay, so, um, if we bring that one back with the, um, with both votes in there. Okay. So that will come back. Okay? And that takes us then to item, um, 8J, aye? Which is, um, on page 245 of our packet, page 3 of the minutes, item 8B, the end of the sentence. Let me see if I can get the right page here. This was just a clarification. Um, this is on the establishing the franchise agreement with Salem Electric. The end of the statement, uh, the end of the sentence, "It was noted that there was new language about vegetation management, and the rates were status quo." Um, I would like that we make it the same as item 8A, where it says, "It was noted that the franchise rate was status quo." Because we will have no control over the, um, rates for electricity.
Right.
So with that correction, I would ask that we approve the, uh, minutes as corrected.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from the March 3, 2025 regular session minutes as amended. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, signify by saying no. Hearing no objection, motion passes unanimously with one absent. Um, can we dispatch with item 8J at the request of our police chief? Um, item 8J, 8J is an ordinance relating to cruising, repealing Kaiser Code Section 26.1. Mr. Brown?
Uh, thank you. Chief Copeland's gonna handle this item.
Chief?
It should last about 30 seconds. I know y'all are cool, you have great cars, you can't cruise in Kaiser, obey the speed limit. That's it, really. It's just, actually, uh, the city attorney pointed this out, like, why do we have this ordinance on the books and we have other laws? Is this something we just clean up and get rid of? I was like, yes. We have not cited anybody for this in 23 years since I've been here. Um, and, I, I know, I know. But there's other things we can do to supple, it's just something we can get rid of, so...
Cleanup.
It's a cleanup. It's a cleanup, yes. And it makes, uh, Tammy Harms very happy, and Joe.
Okay.
Happy too, that she's happy, that we're cleaning this up, so...
Counsel President Starr?
I move that Kaiser City Council adopt ordinance 2025 relating to cruising and repealing Kaiser Code Section 26-1.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt ordinance 2025 relating to cruising, repealing Kaiser Code Section 26-1. Discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, signify by saying no. Hearing no objection, motion passes unanimously with one absent, counselor cross. That does not mean you can go cruising in town, it'd just be another section of the code. Counsel President Starr, would you please read the items on tonight's consent agenda?
Consent calendar reads as follows. Item A, amphitheater fee waiver request, Claggett Creek Watershed Council, soggy day at the park. Item B, event center fee waiver for the 2025 Ed Harris Memorial Trade O'Ree for the Scouts. Item C, approval of the March 17, 2025 regular session minutes. And item D, approval of the March 24, 2025 work session minutes.
Thank you very much. Are there any polls? Counsel President Starr?
I move that, uh, we adopt the consent calendar as read.
Second.
The consent calendar has been moved and seconded. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, signify by saying no. Hearing no objection, motion passes unanimously with one absent, counselor cross. Um, other business, the time is provided to allow the mayor, city council members, or staff an opportunity to bring new oral matters before the council that are not on tonight's agenda. Counselor Christopher?
Thank you. Well, it has come, huh? I know. It has come to our atten, it has come to my attention that our mayor was not present at the, uh, Kaiser Rotary Dinner, but she had a very good excuse. It happened to be her birthday. And so she was having a birthday weekend at her second city with her buddy, and so I did not want this to go unrecognized. I was gonna bring cake, but it's so messy to cut, so instead, I bought cowboy cookies. So I want to recognize and wish our mayor happy birthday. And I think we should sing.
Because we have four minutes to sing.
Yes, so let's make it quick. You ready? Here we go. Happy birthday to you, happy birthday to you, happy birthday dear Kathy Mayor. Happy birthday to you.
Thank you very much.
And Mayor, I have one more, and that is, I want to... And that is, I want to share a picture with you. I let Adam know that I broke into the city hall and took the.
You don't want to see that out loud.
And took, I had a fob, and took the Wallace House poster that you have agreed as a city council to put on long-term loan over at the museum. I just want to show you the progress. They've got the log wall done, and they've already hung it. And I just want you to see how great it looks, so that I know you'll agree this is where it should be. But there's more to come. And part of that is, I would like to make a motion for council consideration that we provide up to $2,400 worth of funding for a rack card for the Kaiser Cultural Center. I have a draft. It was supposed to be a real dress size, but it's not. It's a baby size. And we are unable to participate with Travel Oregon unless we have a rack card. And as you have seen through the annual report that I sent to all of you, the Kaiser Cultural Center is killing it. I mean, the theater, the library, and now the museum is finally coming online, and the art center. I would think that $2,400 worth of transient occupancy taxes, which are supposed to be spent on tourism activities, I think this is an appropriate expense to do that. I've already talked to Tim Wood, who said now is the time to bring it up, is under other business. There's $12,800 left in transient occupancy tax. I would like to use up to 2,400. The reason I don't have the exact number is vector images. If I can get all of the vector images, it won't be that expensive. If I can't, and they have to create them, it's $75 to 100 to create a vector image. So that's the difference.
So what I would recommend is that motion to suspend the rules, well, one of two things. One, we can direct staff to come back with a, with a, an agenda item for our deliberation.
That'd be great.
So rather than try to do that in a rush tonight, let's, do we have consensus of council to direct staff to come back with information related to the request from Kaiser Public Arts? This be from Kaiser Public?
No, I'm our representative on the Kaiser Heritage.
From the Kaiser Heritage Foundation for, from the museum.
Yeah. No, for the whole Kaiser Cultural Center.
Thank you. What she said, next meeting, staff report with additional information for our consideration. Anybody object?
No.
This would be by consensus.
Great.
And that is, that will move forward.
And that'll move us forward.
Okay. So we'll bring that under consideration at the next meeting. Thank you. So we really don't, any pressing staff updates?
You've got three minutes.
Thank you. We don't, well, we've got it. It is, yeah, it is 9:13. Mr. Brown? Any staff updates?
We have no, no, ma'am.
Okay. Well, good? Okay. Okay? Anything pressing from council members? Thank you. Agenda input? Agenda input? Do I have to separate you two?
Probably.
Probably. Well, it's my fault. I can fix that. Monday, April 14, at 2025, April 14, at 6:00 PM, we will meet in a joint work session with the neighborhood associations. On Monday, April 21, we will meet at 6:00 PM in regular session. And Monday, May 5, 6:00 PM, regular session. And not on here, but make sure you have your calendars marked